All right.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our November second board. So by me, this time, uh, Mr. Slade, would you pray for us, please?
Let's open the prayer. Father, this is, uh, this is your time. Father, thank you for the day that you've given us, uh, this opportunity, boy, that we have to gather together. Father, thank you for these men, their sacrifice, their willingness to serve. Thank you for the staff, Lord, that you've assembled here. I pray, Father, you'll give them a great day today. Help them as they do their work. Father, I pray for our law enforcement guidance, just protect them, Lord, bring them home safely. I do see both, Lord, as they look out in the future and see hazards that may be their fault. I pray you give them wisdom and discernment. Help them to know what is in the best interest of our citizens. Father, I just pray that you will help us as we navigate through this season, this election, all of the upcoming changes that we can anticipate. I pray, Father, all of that to go smoothly. Will you be the president, boy, or the president?
Come here.
All right, uh, this time, we need to, uh, have a lay some officers. Uh, it's my time, President's up, so.
I nominate Jay Bishop, lifetime president.
All right, that fell from the back of the second.
Second.
Lifetime president, Jay Bishop.
No, I, I have to take it back. He's, uh, he's done well for a year, but I think that time's about run out.
Yep, so one, uh, yeah, I make a motion for Jared Morrison to be our new president and, uh, Daniel Cross, vice president.
I second.
I'm motion by myself, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names?
Okay, I guess I gotta move on to public comment then. Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop.
Yep.
I commend you for the service you've done last year. All right, all right. He took that so gracefully. Uh, anyway, um, public comment, looks like we have, uh, Mr. Walker, Michael Walker, AT&T, come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Michael Walker with AT&T, and I'm before the board this morning to, uh, appeal to the board if, if they, if they may, to allow AT&T to proceed on some work, on some previously approved permits. Uh, all we're trying to do is get the forty-eight hour notice so that we can continue of the work that has been started. If I may approach the board, I have a handout of those locations, so you'll see exactly what we're talking about.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
We have, um, three locations that have been approved, uh, that we want to proceed work. Uh, the, the first one is relocation, uh, drainage relocation work that is, uh, we're doing, actually doing for the county. And the second, uh, one, uh, four J, oh-four J, oh-oh-seven-one-two N is a service impacting permit that we're placing cable for a customer that has paid for it, and we're trying to get that work completed. And the last one is the, um, on, I guess, on the south side of Andrew Chapel Road at Baker, a permit that had been previously approved by the board that, um, that we'd like the board to reconsider and allow us to proceed with that work. Forty-eight hour notice is what we are, we, we need to get approved so we can go forward. We also have some upcoming, uh, service, uh, impacting work at Cross Creek and Clark Creek subdivision off Hollidbush that we will be, um, submitting permits for later. But the most immediate thing is those permits that have been approved by the board that we can proceed with. That's, uh, that's what we asking, if the board be so gracious and allow us to at least finish the work that they've already approved.
Yeah, the background is that, um, we got a bill from AT&T for about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, that is the county taxpayers' cost, uh, to help AT&T get their stuff out of our way on Andrew Chapel Road project. Hundred and sixty grand, um, on a project that's a bond proceeds project, on a project that everybody has heard because we've been rounding around with all the utilities on the fact that they're charging us to relocate, uh, and demanding a reimbursement from county taxpayers to do so. Uh, and it's impacting our ability to do these projects. And, uh, so we, when we struck, we struck with a broad brush. Uh, we let AT&T know that we had absolutely no intention whatsoever of paying a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for them to get out of our way, uh, so we can improve the road. Uh, and, uh, in order to attain any sort of audience with anybody that has decision-making authority, apparently, Mr. Walker does not, uh, because I don't see anything on this piece of paper at all that addresses that issue, uh, which we made very clear to AT&T, this is what this is about. Uh, and so instead of giving us an audience with somebody that can adjust or address this exorbitant demand, uh, we just shut the work down, uh, and withdrew any permits that had been issued and indicated that we would not be issuing any new permits unless the board obviously chose to override that. But the staff just took the position, we're gonna put a stop work order on everything. So, yes, sir.
Where's the hundred and sixty? I mean, the first I remember was well over a million, then that, our part was gonna be seven hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, this is Entergy, Steve, that they, that we're talking about. This is AT&T. This is a brand you.
The Paul and the Trail. I got you.
Yep, yep. So, Entergy, uh, basically had to be forced to the table, um, and I'm assuming that's where we're headed with these guys. I, I don't know what else to do with them. We, we've got, uh, there's no way in the world we're gonna pay a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to a private company, uh, taxpayers paying that kind of money to move ancient, ancient infrastructure out of the way. None of which has been depreciated, zero. They want us to pay for them to put new stuff everywhere, on our, on our nickel. Okay, so, y'all can do what you wanna do with respect to the request. Um, it's, it's totally up to the board with respect to the request. I could see maybe the Pine Brook matter, may, that may need to go ahead, uh, and we could release that one if you want to. Uh, and I don't know what they're planning to do on Andrew Chapel because, to my knowledge, that work they're doing without charging us.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'm not really sure.
If I may respond?
Just as soon as he threw, you threw?
Yes.
I, I may or may not be.
You had a breaking point.
I'm a little charged up about it because it's, you know, this, this is going to.
I think you can understand and sympathize.
Sure, I, I do. And, and, and the, if, if I may kind of give a little context to everything, we typically do not charge if the cable is on the county right of way. What, we typically move at our own expense. Uh, we provided, I think there was a meeting back in December nineteenth of last year, where we did provide at that meeting, uh, copies of, of easements that AT&T secured and paid for, private right of way, if you will. And that portion is the only thing that we're billing the, the county back for. Everything that's on the county right of way, which is typically what we do across the state with MDOT, with, with other counties and municipalities, we always relocate that at our own cost. Well, when we go to the, to the, uh, to the expense of buying an easement or securing an easement.
Why did you do that? If you knew that we were gonna be getting the easements anyhow?
Well, we, we've had these easements and been on that property for a long time, a year, it's at prior to this.
So now you want us to pay for it?
No, no, we want to be reimbursed for the, for the, that's the point, that's the point of getting these because it protects us and our infrastructure. You know, that, that's why we do that. Now, with, in all, in all due respects of, of the cost, we didn't know about the issue of the cost, at least I personally didn't know until we were told that no more permits would be approved. So that's, that's when I was contacted. And I, and I understand, uh, Mr. Slade's concern. Uh, the, the cables that we're, that we are placing, the cost that we have is actually greatly reduced. There's a discount, uh, that we've applied to it, uh, that, to the county. Plus, we downsized the cables. We didn't go back with exactly the same cable sizes, and as you know, copper is extremely expensive. So we have reduced it quite a bit. And while the, the cost that we are asking for reimbursement for the, for the county is a hundred and sixty-one thousand, it is high compared to if we had gone back life for life, it would have been a lot more.
Well, you could just put fiber out there.
Fiber would be, would have been more expensive when you look at all the electronics that, that goes with it. It would have been. But, but to the point, and we understand that, but to the point, these permits have been previously approved and, 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 you know, I don't, I don't, I'd like to separate the issues and not link them together if we could. And let's get the work done, and then we could, I don't mind coming back and we just lay out everything that, all our cost basis, so you'll see that it's a fair cause, actually a great, really, really reduced cost from what it would have been if we'd, if we'd put all our costs that we have to relocate into it.
You say you're going back with a, a lesser cable?
Smaller cables, I consider going, as an example, should.
Okay, smaller, but does it not need the bigger?
Well, but as, you know, as, in some locations, we've re-routed some and feed them with fiber and other, and other means, but in this particular case, where there was a two-hundred pair cable, and I just use that as an example, we may have downsized it to a hundred pair to save on the cost of.
I know, but so it doesn't need the two-hundred pair?
At that, no, no. Based on, based on the infrastructure that we have, now, I, you know, uh, we, we downsized, the two-hundred that we have was placed many, many years ago.
How many, how many years ago?
Well, I'm not in a position to tell you right now, sir. I don't know how long it's been there, but the fact is, probably at least ten years, maybe twenty. I could find out more specifically when.
So, ten years longer than their depreciation scale. In other words, they've recovered the cost through depreciation ten-plus years ago?
Well, I think.
They're gonna let us pay for all of the new stuff going in. They're gonna let your county taxpayers pay for all that. Uh, you, you guys control access to your right of way. The request before you today, which is under public comment, so we've been, we've engaged in a, in a back and forth. It's really beyond the purview of public comment anyway. But nonetheless, uh, you, you guys control access to your right of way. If you believe that some, one or more of these, uh, projects that are listed here, uh, should be allowed to proceed, you can certainly do that. You can pick them off and decide which ones you wanna release and which ones you'd rather hold on to. Uh, the, the applicant would not be here in front of you asking for relief if it wasn't a pressure point for them. And as I sit here right now, I have heard nothing from AT&T with respect to their demand for reimbursement, nothing. The only thing that I have heard is a bunch of caterwauling about not being able to get permits. Seems to me that that's the best pressure point we have to get somebody's attention, and I ain't got no attention from anybody that can address their exorbitant demand. I repeat, exorbitant demand.
If I may respond, please.
Yeah, we're gonna, then the, the, this is public comment, this is not a.
I, that's why I'm saying that, but my, my, my point, I didn't wanna get into that at all. I just wanted.
Well, we need it, we need it to.
I would like to at another time. I mean, at some point in time where we can get to talk about it, but my, my, my role for public comment was to just have these released, and then let's sit, let's get together and talk about the rest of it and the cause. I, I mean, I, I think that would be there, 'cause I, at this point, I don't.
You need to come back with some, with some figures and everything, but at this point, it'd be, it'd be up to the board, what y'all wanna do with about this.
I, I think we're better served to talk to somebody with authority at AT&T that can address this demand, and then we'll talk about permits.
What, what, Mike?
Jared, I, I'm Mr. Walker's here. I'd like to speak up too. We have a lot of problems between AT&T and buying my permits. Covering the hogs up correctly and stuff like that, so I would like to address that one.
Okay.
Hey, do you have a question for him? I got one. Can, can you talk me through the East Pine Brook, what you see on the top of your list right there? Tell me what that consists of.
Well, that, that primarily, the, the details of that is, uh, and I'm not in a position to talk all about it. I'm, uh, the engineer couldn't make it, who could tell all about it? But we're just, it, it's just a drainage, we relocating for some drainage work. That's pretty much all I can tell you.
You don't know where or anything like that?
Uh, no, I don't know all the details on it, uh, but I know that that, that this.
And, and the reason I'm asking you that question on, on Pine Brook is we, we're replacing some bridges and some infrastructure stuff around that same area.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanna be sure it works in hand in hand with what we're doing right now. We're in there working right now?
It's, it's associated with the work that the county is currently doing. So, and all we're doing is completing that, that portion of that work, and that's a permit that has been approved.
Mike, you, you know about that one? The East Pine Brook?
We're, we're allowing to rush on that. Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to get some plant, find life on that property.
So we're not ready to approve that yet?
That's the drainage work to follow the, the bridge replacement, so it's.
After the bridge replacement's done. Okay, so that can wait?
Okay, so that, okay.
Okay. So we don't, I don't need to take action on that first one, then. What about the second one? Where's that at?
Didn't you say that was individual?
Well, that's for a customer that's already, has previously paid for us to go in and place some infrastructure.
Yeah, I would like to approve B.
Second.
You're talking about the, uh.
The second one.
John's mate?
Yeah, oh-four J, oh-oh-seven.
What do you mean, he's already paid?
That means that's a customer that was asking for some additional work to be done, and there was some construction charges associated with the work, and he has agreed to and has paid for that work.
Craig, if we wanna do that, how would we go about it? Do we need to add it to the agenda or anything?
Yeah, just, let's, let's wait until additional business, and, uh, we'll stick it on additional business and authorize that one project and permit request as it relates to that address right there, so that it's clear we're not approving anything else.
Okay.
Okay. And, and last.
Mike, I can appreciate your position here, definitely. You trying to get a job done, I know, but we are too.
I know, and, and, and in all due respect and, uh, to the, the county attorney and, and to the board, uh, when an opportunity presents itself, and y'all feel like we can sit down and talk, I'd be glad to come back with more detail because purpose, my, my point in public comment was to only address these three issues, these three locations that have been previously approved to get the forty-hour notice so we can proceed.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
This atmosphere of charging the taxpayers when clearly everybody in the room knows that your infrastructure is worn out, I mean, it's depreciated out, let's say that, never before, since I know of, have y'all done this? Why now?
We, we have.
Y'all just say it's a good time to get the county?
No, we have always, um, asked for relocation costs when we, um, place, we place, when we have it on private right of way that we purchased, we do. If it was all county right of way, we would absorb all that cost.
Well, if, if you can go back on county right of way when we get this road fixed, I mean, wouldn't be no cost. Just put in the county's right of way.
Well, we, more than likely, when we, when we go through it again, we probably will look at private, but I can't say, 'cause I have not seen the drawings.
I mean, y'all put it in, in county right of way now?
Yeah.
I mean, why couldn't you go back in county right of way on the time call?
Well, the location apart, I believe, and, and I have not looked at the drawings. Uh, we talked strictly about the, the road work, right, the hundred and sixty thousand. I've not looked at those drawings and determined where we are and where we could go, so I, I can't answer that. But the location, typically, what we try to do is get on private right of way where we can, and we actually go out and negotiate with private property owners and pay for that, an easement.
But you know as well as I do, y'all have done, this is not something that you just did this past year.
Oh, no.
This is something that you were planning for years and years, and now you see an opportunity to go in there and get some money.
No, no, that's not.
Okay, let's don't get that money.
No, 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 we relocating, um, infrastructure is already there, just reimbursement for, and it's something we, we have always done that across the state everywhere.
Well, it's just on the market, every other project we've done since I've been supervisor, we've not had a cost from AT&T.
And that's because the cost, that's because the cable is a hundred percent located on county right of way, and we do not.
Well, that's why.
That's what we're just telling you, why don't we put it there now?
Well, I mean, but the existing cable that we relocate.
But it's ten years old or plus. I mean, it's all that.
I, I can find out all the details on how long the cable is.
Let's, let's let you find that out, 'cause right now, I think you see where, where we are, and we're not probably gonna budge much.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I understand that. And I, I just appreciate the opportunity to at least get one approved so we can move forward and get this, uh, business at work, and then we can set a time, I can work with Mr. Slade, and we can set a time where we can come back and talk about all the details of everything.
Now, now you kinda know our, our side feelings on it. So, anyway, we appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Y'all have a great day.
Appreciate you.
Uh, a motion, busy, uh, approval minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Most approved.
Motion approved by Jay.
Second.
Second by?
Steve. Daniel.
Second by Daniel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, I'm, I'm, sorry, John. I was just, one, and I may be out of order here. Uh, un, under our.
Consent?
Yeah, other, the holiday matter. Mike, are you gonna bring that up later, or is that in this?
Yeah, he's bringing it up.
Okay, okay. All right, never mind then. This.
You're out, out of order.
I'm out of order.
Bring it ahead. All right, John.
I made petition to change the assessment of two thousand twenty real, uh, property assessment rule.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed.
I'd be request, uh, to void two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty tax sale and refund tax sale purchase for PIN number six-nine-nine-nine. Pay from where the parcel was erroneously assessed.
Motion. Motion by Steve, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed. Mike Harris.
Good morning, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to start off with road work accomplished in October and road work scheduled for November.
So moved.
Second. I'll give you a breakdown of where we had, uh.
Who made, who made the motion? Motion by Daniel, second by Steve. All in favor say aye. All opposed.
Always gonna discuss what he's doing.
Well, he made a motion and second. Go ahead, discuss it. Have any discussion? Go ahead.
Uh, bridge maintenance, we've done, uh, two bridge maintenance work orders, and we've gotten two bridges replaced. We're finishing up the second right now. Uh, done eight livestock barrels, sixty covert replacements in the county, driveway covert replacements, uh, twenty-four ditching work orders, fifty-one limb pickups, ten driveway aprons, two hundred and fourteen limb pickups, uh.
Where's those limb pickups at?
They just scattered over. I mean, I can, I got them broke out by districts.
A little storm created some, didn't it, Mike?
Well, that was the first limb pickup. I called that with some storm stuff, Jared. This was mostly work orders, bus turnarounds. We've done six this month, last month, road repair is, uh, that is where we go out and fix a road where a pothole and stuff is. That's one, a hundred and twenty-four of those. Uh, we've been working and prepping on twenty-three roads to get ready for next year, and then we had two hundred and four storm pickups on it.
So how many covers you say you did?
Sixty.
Sixty covers?
We're running about sixty, eighty a month.
Wow.
That's just driveway.
These are new covers, new houses being built, coming off the road.
No, not all of them.
Be damaged covers.
Crashed in, whatever.
Could be damaged covers. It's just what's get called in on a work order right there. That's what I'm giving you. Uh, then also, we're prepping roads right now, getting ready for next year's, uh, pavement preservations on it.
All right, thank you. No other questions?
Okay. B?
Uh, B is authority to pay damage rental.
We already did. We did, we got it back, we.
Yeah, we did.
I got confused. Sometimes that discussion goes before you vote.
It does, but, it does, but I didn't know you had any discussion on that. But anyway, okay, anybody, uh, uh, all in favor?
I'm gonna pay, I'm gonna pay better attention.
All right.
Uh, repair, uh, damaged cat roller, uh, CW sixteen roller rental for, uh, thirty-six hundred and three dollars and twenty-seven cents. This is where we rented a roller to do our chip seal, and we got tar on the brushes and stuff and had to replace them.
So moved.
Second.
Most approved by Daniel, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, discussion of potential action concerning bridges located on Harold Road, Thomasville, Fox Hall, and Ehrlich Road.
So can we not put any of those, uh, covers, those aluminized covers in?
Jay, we went back and, me and Tim, and I'm gonna lean on Tim on a little of this, we discussed this and went back and looked at our hydraulics on these bridges. Uh, the channels are so big on some of these bridges, I mean, you would have to put like three of those box covers in to take place for a bridge. We, you're probably talking a hundred thousand dollars a piece for these size box cover. Now, we did look at the, uh, Ehrlich Road, and we can do, uh, pipes there. Uh, the material, just the pipes, it cost us about sixty thousand dollars on that one.
And we do the work?
And the county forces will do the work. Now, that'll be just the pipes.
Be two, right?
Yes, there'd be two pipes to take the place of that bridge.
Still taking out that, that bad hook that causes a problem.
But now, there's gonna be some, we're probably gonna be somewheres around the one-twenty on that time. We do the rocking and everything else.
Versus what would a bridge would cost us?
I think we was at, we were putting in, that was gonna be.
We weren't doing a bridge.
Box cover, it's gonna be, this was right between four, fifteen thousand.
Oh, yeah. That's a good option.
So, I mean, we, we've saved some money right there, but like Harold, Thomasville, and Fox Hall, just as big as the channels are, there just really no way to do those button bridge on those.
Hey, will you walk me through the cost of these things? So Harold, where you at? Because, but, and the reason I'm asking is 'cause this wasn't in the budget, right? So this is coming out of what?
Cash.
Cash?
Okay, the material, material for Harold will be ninety thousand estimate.
Okay.
The labor for it is one seventy-four.
All right.
Uh, Fox Hall is ninety-four thousand for the material, one seventy-six for the labor.
Okay.
Thomasville is one twenty-five for material, one seventy-one for labor.
All right.
Uh, Daniel, let me say, uh, some of this was budget. I don't know how much is gonna go over or not. We did put a million dollars in there for this, thinking we weren't gonna do more than a million dollars per year.
Yeah, this, I'm, I'm trying to get the total.
You're talking about eight, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars estimate on those three bridges right now.
So eight, thirty?
What was, but, is this above budget?
It will be in just a second, I think.
Probably gonna be getting over, am I right, Mr. Lawrence?
So there's a million dollars in our budget this year for bridge repair, right?
Y'all had just, y'all had discussed during budget time to, as these were presented, to take it out of cash and put them on. Last, I forget when it was, it was before the budget ended in September. Y'all had already approved.
Two of them.
Two of them. And in October, on one of our minutes, we amended his budget for those two.
All right, which two was those?
One was Pine Brook and one was Garrett. Uh, the Pine Brook.
No.
The two she's talking about is Greenfield and Shallow.
Greenfield and Shallow, I'm sorry.
All right, so hang on. So Greenfield and Shallow.
Greenfield and Shallow, and we've already done the amendment for that.
All right, so how much was Greenfield? Do you remember?
I, I.
Did we burn through the million that's in the budget on Greenfield and Shallow? Let me ask it that way.
No.
How much you think we got left? And, and I.
I mean, we're, we burned through probably half million of them.
All right, so five hundred K's gone. So we got five hundred thousand left in bridge, right, for repairs?
Roughly.
And you're at eight-thirty on these first three. How much is the early project?
Well, the early project is, you know, we're gonna be somewheres around, I'm estimating around one-twenty.
One-twenty for materials?
No, sixty for material.
Sixty for materials and one-twenty for labor.
Well, that's labor and some rock and stuff.
Okay, labor, rock, whatever.
I had to go all that up.
I got you. So we're two hundred grand more on top. It takes us to a million. So I guess my question is, is do we wanna go, obviously, bridge is wiped out at this point. So now we're automatically in the cash, and I'm, I'm guessing.
We only have eleven more months.
Well, I'm saying, we did a phenomenal job staying inside of month by month. In the month by month, we did really, really well, 'cause we only spent half of that line item in the month of October.
Only because we put it off last meeting.
Right, hey.
How much was, how much was that estimate?
That's good. So I guess that's kinda my question. Of these four that's out here, I, I don't wanna go into cash this quick into November, so can we?
Let me, let me tell you something about.
Hey, just, hey, let me just, let me, one thing. I, I'd just like to hear it prioritized on which one of these four, give a couple of them, and let's just don't break the budget right out of the gate. So, Harris.
I'm good with that.
Somebody call Harris.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
Hey, rank these up for me, these four, a priority order. Can you do that?
Hang on, Tim, while he's busy.
Tim, he's either doing math or something.
We have ten total that we have to get replaced.
'Cause there's much more coming.
Right.
This is, this isn't the only four. That's right. This is, this is not even half of them, right?
Well, we get all of these, then the other two, that'd be half.
Are we doing this by priority order of worst to best, or we just saying, we just take these roads and do these? Alright, so Harrison, tell me, tell me the priority of these four, which one's the worst one?
Uh, all four of them.
They're all the same?
They all posted low weights, uh, I think everything on this thing is posted, no more than ten tons.
Alright, so, so, so my question is this, how many of these, I mean, are we planning on doing all ten out of cash? Well, yeah, but we talked about originally, during the budget, that we were gonna do. Couple a year. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, but, we're, we're over the couple. Well, obviously, we're, sound like we're out doing them all this year.
So, let's, let's be clear too, one of the issues with the bridges is how long it takes to get the parts, the components, so, uh, on these three, the components is three hundred and nine thousand. Uh, those can be held at the facility where they're made, once they're ready, or they can come to Mike's shop and, and be stored on the yard.
But they won't make them till we issue a P O.
So it's a separate P O for the labor that we're under contract with Key to do now, so.
I guess my, I guess my problem is of the ten, I know if we were gonna do a couple a year to go over the budget out of cash. You're right. We're already blowing that theory out of the water. So pick me a couple to go over budget with out of cash and we'll do it, but then after that, until we get to next Thanksgiving, we're not doing anymore, in my mind. Well, now, at our last meeting. I mean, you don't just keep spending money you won't have anymore? And talk with them about what our plan was, have you done that?
So, yeah, I have, and, and that's, uh, that's, uh, shooting at a moving target, those discussions, uh, they said that what we needed to do was submit to our district engineer a, a plan of action as to how we're gonna do this, and I think the board has already authorized that plan, uh, in, in replacing the ten bridges and, and we can do that over time, it's not gonna hold up the state aid monies and the programming, uh, that's, that's what he told me in the last conversation. Depending on how long it drags on, obviously there will be, uh, that, that could potentially change, but I think we can get some state aid programs in and without having all of these bridges replaced. We just need to have a, uh, a plan on this, and what I'm, the reason I said that about materials, Daniel, is, uh, these are all precast bridges, so the materials are interchangeable. Uh, but if we run into a bridge, we're, we're in the next cycle of bridge inspection, happens every year, if we run into a bridge that has to be closed, there's no discussions about when do we close it, the bridge inspector stands there until the sheriff gets there to close them.
Here, here, here's, here's my biggest fear.
I don't think we're gonna have those, but.
And Brad, this, this is, this is my biggest fear on the whole deal, who knows what happens tomorrow? Alright. Right? So we could drop ourselves off into, uh, into the biggest depression we've been into, to where not only bridges are closed, but we don't have any money, anything else. I don't wanna go deep into our reserves, not knowing the outcome of tomorrow's election and the state of the economy and the worldwide pandemic. I'm okay with going into it a little bit, but to rattle off four more bridges and another million dollars, you're going into cash, uh, well, five, six hundred thousand dollars out of the gate.
Well, can, can we buy the components, go ahead and issue a P O and let them sit on the yard, and, I mean, because a lot of this is.
Takes time to get them, how many months?
Take them in?
Sometimes.
How long?
It could take up six months so you can get.
What we discussed, so I thought we were gonna do two or three this year, two or three next year, and then finish the next year, but right now, we're, we're half in. If we put these, that's five. We don't have a ten.
Right.
We got, we got other, I mean, I reckon what we did is we picked the lowest, lowest weight, so.
Why didn't y'all pick the ones that were most crucial?
That, that's what he said.
I mean, that, these are.
Weight limit, they're down so low.
You can't even take a school bus across these.
Okay.
That's what he said.
But, but are they taking school buses over them now?
I don't know. They're posted.
I mean, as long as we post them and they're actually safe to drive on.
I know that one on Thomasville, the school bus drivers in.
Right, I'm just saying, as long as we do what we're supposed to do, and then we budget like we said we were gonna do to take care of them. I'm scared to go into a million dollars cash right now with six more ready to go to come right back at us, and we have no idea the state of the economy after.
Right, we don't know what the, we don't know what the next bridge.
So the one, the one on Ehrlich, y'all got it down from five hundred down to what, one, about one fifty?
Should be less than one fifty.
So imagine if we would have approved that, look how good your, your pencils get sharper, you know, I mean, we're getting better on that, we'd save four hundred thousand just in a week. I'm proud of y'all.
But the other ones, we tried, we looked at it as far as box covers, culverts, or whatever we could do, it's just too big of a channel to try to put, I mean, you're gonna run your costs up, it's gonna be much.
You don't, you don't have the room to widen, you'd have to widen the channel back to get it through four or five cultures.
Don't create the airspace for the water.
It, it just, it makes me nervous, zeroing out a line item, and then into cash, you know, not to Thanksgiving, not, I mean. Well, I, I'm not as concerned about the election doom and gloom, I think no matter which way it turns out, we're, we're still gonna be here, you know? No, I, no, I'm with you, I'm just saying, but that's stuff there, but we're still rolling into this one, I'm, I'm for doing two or three a year. I'm just not for doing, I mean, this is four.
As long as it don't hurt our state aid money, get our money.
They're gonna, somebody's gonna come back in here and march and say, man, this has gotten really bad, this bridge has got to be done. As long as state aid will sign off on what we wanna do, and like Brad said, you know, not negatively impact this is what we wanna do, then I'm for pushing these down the road and, uh, order them a few months later.
I mean, you, it's a toss, it's a toss up between them thirty bridges.
If we don't have to pay A T and T a hundred and sixty thousand, there's another bridge. Can you help us, sir, can you help us?
That'd get the cover in.
I see if I might left over, it's all at one-twenty.
But now, one-twenty plus sixty, so it's one eighty, almost two hundred thousand. It said sixty in materials and one-twenty in labor.
They're all basically the same.
What I'm thinking is, is, if it takes six months to get them in, go ahead and put the P O in.
In, in all of the.
And just let them sit there. My only fear is that they come back and say, well, the stuff we ordered, but we got five hundred thousand. Yes, out of the regular budget.
Airs, school bus, I mean, year or two, fire truck, that's one way and one way.
What makes me nervous is if they do close that bridge down, then we still got schools going on and we got components that hadn't been ordered for that six months.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's what scares me.
Loaded, they probably.
So, uh, we've done two, right?
Yep.
And, and, go ahead.
That we've done Garrett, the second one is actually out of the bond money because it's in the Pine Brook drainage.
I mean, I had like, I had Greenfield and Shiloh.
Right, those, those have been ordered, th- those parks have been ordered, but now there has been no P O issued for construction.
Alright, so, so. Wasn't anything to do with our ten bridges, that was that.
Correct.
That was that emergency deal.
That's correct.
Emergency.
So we've only done one bridge.
Hang on a second, the Greenfield and Shiloh, the five hundred thousand on that roughly, is that turnkey, turn, dead at five thousand, done, or are we gonna add more to that five hundred thousand? Or is that just materials?
No, tho- those, let's say Greenfield is, uh, nineteen thirty-one, nineteen, what, you remember? So, the, the, the total estimate on Greenfield's three oh three.
Okay.
And the total estimate on Shiloh is one seventy-two.
Okay, and that's total turnkey done, right?
That's total, that's, that's materials that it's done.
Yeah, five hundred and thirty-five. Harrison's good, you know, you're right, five hundred thousand, so that, that's a half of the budget done, so there's five hundred thousand left. So why don't we do this, uh, just a compromise, let's, uh, sit tight for a few months, see how we go, and then order them, you know?
Already ordered them, they've already ordered those too.
We hadn't ordered.
You have not ordered those?
Greenfield and Shiloh have been ordered. Greenfield and Shiloh have been ordered.
You talking about this?
Let's do those, two. Yeah, well, we've already voted to do those, but, uh, could we do that, just sit on them?
Greenfield and Shiloh, when y'all approved it in your last budget year, when this budget year opened in October, Mike came to me, reminded me, we already done a budget amendment for those. In addition, so you've got your million sitting out there, and we have done a budget amendment of five hundred thousand for those.
Oh, so we got five hundred thousand to take additional then?
Right.
Okay.
So actually, I don't know what he, if he spent anything else out of the million, because we did the budget amendment for the two roads there talking.
To add to the budget?
To add to the budget.
Five hundred thousand.
Correct, to add to it, so you still have your million original.
But that still came out of cash, didn't it?
It all does.
It's still the same money, I mean, still out of cash, that's right, it's the same thing.
But it's sitting out there, I don't know how much has been spent, I didn't look at that, but now it's up to a million five.
But that, the only thing that does do, it gives us a little room to operate the rest of the year, you know? Yeah. But, and that's why I was saying, hold off, because I would like to see five hundred thousand, just who knows what comes up, you know?
Might have some.
Something might get worse.
Or some.
We may have a real emergency there on one of these, you know? I'm waiting, I'm good on waiting, I, I would feel much better waiting for the first of the year, so, yeah. Is that gonna put y'all on a bind?
No, I mean.
Even on the component side, we're in the components, yeah? Yeah, weight everything. Yeah, I would think, I mean, cause it takes six months for them to come in?
Our biggest, yeah, our biggest concern, Jay, was trying to get a state aid program and stuff and.
Well, we don't want to rough that.
Yeah, and that, you know, at some point they can say, okay, fix your bridges, take your state aid money and fix your bridges.
Well, yeah, we're, we definitely want to avoid that.
So, what, what I, what I would ask the board then is, because I, it's a little foggy for me now, is I, I need to provide Butch Swales, our district engineer, with a plan of how we're gonna approach these bridges, and, and I, I don't think wait till the first of the year, I mean, I, I need, I need to outline, and if it's one a year, i- i- I just need a, we need to get a plan, and, and I don't wanna come up with that plan between Mike and I, because.
I thought we had a plan, I thought we said we were gonna do a few, uh, uh, two or three this year, two or three next year, and two or three the next year.
Okay, I mean, is it?
Is that not what we discussed?
Well, I don't think we ever got specific and.
And we just breezed it.
I think we got off about it, but doesn't.
But a couple, a couple each year to, would have ten then, was what I was under the impression of, when we came right back the first month of the budget and said, here's four of them, I kinda, it break check me a little bit, so. I, I'm good on a couple a year.
And, and I, and certainly, I'm not trying to press anything, I, I just wanna be clear on what the plan is, I don't wanna misrepresent anything to Butch, is what we're, what we're planning on doing, so.
Well, how about just tell him, you know, after the first year, we intend to order the components to be able to do the next allotment, which would be these right here. And then.
The subsequent year will continue that.
Same thing, yeah. I'd say two, two to three a year, and, and until we, we'll it down. Till we get it knocked out. Unless they wanna fund it, they will do them all. Unless, they're not gonna do that.
You know.
Now, I, I will say, just as a reminder, in case somebody asks, we will be presenting you a program for, two of these bridges are, are L S B P eligible?
Yeah.
Which we have some L S B P monies, that's state aid monies, that, that's just what they're, it, it can only be used for that, so two of the bridges will be covered under that, so we'll have a program for that, so.
So we're, we're talking about eight bridges now?
Right, potentially, right, so, and, and, and when we figure the ten, there's some other bridges that need repairs, and so the intent on those is when you take a bridge out, every component on that bridge is not necessarily bad, like Greenfield Road has some bad pieces, but it's got some good bridge decks in it, so the intent is when we get the good bridge decks, we can go to one, I think one's on Midway Road, and there's a few more, uh, that we can go and repair those.
Go to Steve's district.
Absolutely.
With those, you should, thank you, we, we just appreciate any of it.
I, I, anything we can do to help District Four is.
We just, we're trying to create some components to use on the bridges we got to repair.
So, I, I wanna be clear that there's not just ten, the, the intent was to replace ten, but there were some more that might need a panel or two replaced, that kind of thing, uh, maybe four or five panels, but the bridge is still in good shape, so as we replace bridges, we'll get the components to, hopefully, to, uh, repair those.
Alright.
You got your plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. See how easy that was?
What did we wind up, what, what are we winding up repairing now, the Shiloh?
The plan is to do two or three, uh, after the first of the year, and then, uh, two or three the next year.
Yeah, because I was kinda cloudy on that too, I mean, it's gotta be on.
And then two or three more on the list after the first of the year, and there'll be a component order and a delay, and then eventually there'll be an installation.
I just know when we were in the budget, we discussed the fact that, you know, our bridges were all great and dandy all along this time, all of a sudden, bam, we got ten. So the idea is, we're probably gonna be a steady stream from now on. Well, and I think part of that was y'all explained to us, they changed the regulations on the bridges, right, so the scope in which they inspect them.
So, I, I, just to clarify a little bit, and I'm not gonna take a lot of time, in years past, it was a sufficiency rating, that's all state aid looked at, that's all they looked at, with the sufficiency rating, got below fifty, it had to be replaced. When I, in my conversation the other day with the state aid engineer, he said, don't pay attention to sufficiency rating at all. Okay, so they're looking at other methods of inspection, and it's, it's a numerical thing, and if, if a portion of it goes below a five, that's when the bridge has to be sent to be load rated. And once it is set to be load rated, that's when you need to start looking at replacing it, and so tha- that's the bridges that we've got here, that one of the, uh, components has a, uh.
How, how often do they evaluate them?
Every, it, is, at least once every two years, so some bridges, if they have some questionable parts, they're put on a one-year cycle, but every bridge is inspected at least every other year.
Are any of those on the one-year cycle?
Uh, I think yes, I don't know which ones are.
So to me, those would be the high priorities, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, all three of the, all three of the ones that we were presenting there, let's not count Ehrlich, uh, ha- had one of the nu- numerical values under five, which is where it triggers the load rate.
Where does the Ehrlich fall in?
Uh, I don't remember, it's, uh, I know it's posted, uh, it's not on this, uh, it was a separate project, I, I don't.
I'm asking, how many of them had other way in, in, in and out?
What's that?
Do they all have a?
Uh, Garrett Lane did not, Garrett was the first one we did, it was, it was a dead end, uh.
Let me guess, that's the one with the chicken house?
It, it has chicken.
And we already did that one, heck, I would've put that one dead last, you know, if all we're doing is fixing a bridge, somebody'd be able to take it.
I mean, there's, there's houses down there too, I mean, there's, 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 there's houses there, there's residential. And it was, it was, it was the worst, it was.
The worst bridge we had on the list.
It was the worst.
Hey, on Ehrlich, you talking about putting that, uh, pipe in, that'll take it off the bridge list from here on out.
Absolutely, it will not, it, it will not have.
So we, we could eliminate that one from ever coming back home.
But right now, that one is rated below.
We got, we got, I'm on, we got two hundred and fifteen bridges, right?
Huh?
I know.
We got two hundred and fifteen bridges in the county, so, we got a lot of bridges in the county, so.
But the, the, the three, the Harold, Thomasville and Fox Hall, those all rate below the rating, right, below the number? Which would be the priority?
That's right.
Well, for years, we've been able to take our bridge fund, bridge and culvert fund, and spend a lot of it on culvert, whereas now, it sounds like we're gonna have to shift our priorities more to bridge repair than culvert.
And I think we discussed this, and if, if we haven't, I apologize, we, we, all of the bridges have been through this new inspection cycle, so I, I personally don't anticipate ten or twenty popping up next year, just like the, I, I think, I, I, I think it's gonna be a, a much slower process of having to replace bridges, I, I, I think this was the, the first major wave of that, and, uh, I think it'll calm down after that.
Which makes me sure, is state aid's gonna be okay with us doing this, and if they're not, come back and let us know.
Well, absolutely, because what, what my plan now is to send, uh, Butch this, uh, procedure that we're gonna go through, and then fol- we'll follow right up behind that with some state aid programs, uh, and we'll know immediately, so we're, we're gonna know in the next month, uh, if he's.
Sounds good.
Fair enough?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, uh, Mr. President, I would like to move our Veterans Day from Wednesday to Friday next week, uh, reason I wanna do that is, I mean, we definitely wanna celebrate Veterans Day, but we have to kinda close up everything, safe it up good for, to be off for a day, and then we'll have to come in and spend a half a day Thursday opening everything back up to go to work.
Mike, when you're talking about closing and opening, explain what you're talking, you're talking about holes that's left in the ground?
Right, culvert repairs, you know, just delaying our work down the road, uh, so we just kinda want to swap Friday for Wednesday, is what we're wanting to do.
Is that just the road department?
Can we do that?
Yeah, I, I, I did a brief look to see, uh, and, and so it, since it's not impacting the entirety of your county work force, it's just the road crew, and you have a basis to do that, um, I, I'm comfortable with you guys authorizing it, if you, if you're of a mind.
I'm like, mostly do it. I'll talk to my guys, and they're all okay with this.
I would, to me, if somebody says, no, uh, Wednesday is the holiday and that's my day, I would let him have that day, but on Friday, he needs to be in, and he may be cleaning the shop or.
Yes, so, uh, the.
If there's plans or something.
The only issue that you need to, and it's clarified in your minutes, and will be clarified in your minutes, I want to make sure you understand, you're authorizing them to work Wednesday as a normal workday, they'll receive regular rate of pay, it'll be a normal workday in terms of hours. as a normal workday, they'll receive regular rate of pay, it'll be a normal workday in terms of hours, uh, if somebody's sick, they can, they can get sick leave, if somebody has already had, uh, plans made, and they need to be out, they can ask for annual leave, so it just works like any other normal workday. I wanna make it clear that they're not authorized and paying.
Time and half, right. Right, holiday pay.
Yeah, they're gonna get it on Friday, they'll get their holiday pay.
I make a motion that we allow Mike to adjust his holiday, uh, to fit the workforce and the jobs that are ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Oh.
We got a vote on it. Motion by Steve, second by Daniel, any more discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I got one more thing, I talked briefly with Craig before we started the board meeting, uh, we have got North Street repaired back from the emergency damage, and we've also got it overlaid, and back to normal status right there, uh, on North Street, so.
And it turned out good, and I appreciate the county stepping up and taking charge of the operation, and, and getting it done in a timely manner, cause it was plenty of time for them to. I'm not calling no names, but they had plenty of time to get it done.
On that, so, and we'll get it striped, uh, give me about fourteen days before we can stripe it, and we'll get it striped and be done with that.
Have we got our striping machine in?
It'll be in here about ten, eleven days, Jerry, uh, I got an email this week.
You gonna use it out there?
Sorry.
You gonna use it out there?
We'll probably put thermoplastic down out there just cause of the traffic, and it'll last so much longer on it, so, on that, and I'd also wanna say a special thanks to the Sheriff's Department for yesterday's incident, uh, for the quick response, so, thank you.
Hey, Mike, before you go, I, I noticed, uh, Thursday, they were out there milling timberlands, who's doing that?
We did. We did, we did from the, right up above the courthouse, Jake, on Timberland, come down to North Street, and the north, up to Emerald.
All that was bunged.
That was all what was kinda figured in.
The bunged.
All, all Britton's construction zone area, is the reason we did that.
There was something that, I remembered, we discussed that we would have this port and the city, I was thinking that was Timberland, that the city was gonna work one of those roads, and we were gonna work the other one.
City's supposed to work, I've corresponded with the city, they're supposed to work above Timberland toward Discount Drugs, back up to whatever that is, it cuts across, of course, it wants.
And they tie it in on North Street, going past the courthouse.
And they tie it in at Emerald.
The courthouse property is kind of what we were responsible for.
Yeah.
We did do the misdemeanor area going into.
Yes, got up to the misdemeanor paved and done where it was rocky, going to the new misdemeanor facility, so.
Good deal, alright.
So, everything should be complete besides the strike.
I looked at just.
Thank you.
They did.
Okay, Mr. Slate.
Thanks, sir. Looks like we've got, uh, three public hearings that could all be set as one motion with the board's pleasure, uh, November the sixteenth at nine AM, Holloman, conditional use request, Carr, and, uh, Presley.
That motion.
Second.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve, set all these public hearings, uh, any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh, I got it, Renee.
You got it, Renee?
I'm sorry.
I was looking for my sheet, sheet. Renee knows, she's gotta help me.
Okay, first, uh, item D in the public hearings is the, uh, a public hearing for the Chris Holyfield dimensional variance request at eleven ninety-seven Old Fannin Road, this is District Two property, uh, we're gonna open that public hearing, uh, I'm gonna wait just a second to see if Mr. Holyfield or our folks are here.
No, sir.
No one here on that, okay, Mr. Holyfield with strong sp- strong point storage is seeking a dimensional variance of sixteen square feet from the sign ordinance of the Reservoir Community District, the RCD regs require establishments with more than ten thousand square feet of dedicated space may have multiple signs, but the total square footage cannot exceed two hundred square feet, so the sign plan shows two signs on the building, that right now they total one hundred and forty-six square feet, Mr. Holyfield is asking for one additional sign that has seventy-one square feet, and is to run along the west side of the building that faces Old Fannin, uh, that would bring the total square footage to two hundred and sixteen square feet, so he's asking for a dimensional variance of sixteen square feet, it's a large climate controlled facility with eighty-three thousand square feet, uh, it's located on four point seven oh acres, it's O C two, uh, so that public hearing is open, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of the Chris Holyfield strong point storage dimensional variance request, anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, we'll close that public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
Yeah, I, I'll give my comments on that, and then I'll probably let Jay speak on the same side, we kinda split Old Fannin Road right there, but I think there's proper signage that's there now, I don't wanna open the door for more very, I, I don't wanna set a precedence of changing the signage issues that we have in those, uh, off Old Fannin Road in that overlay district, so, I'm for leaving it like it is, I'm, I'm not in the motion to approve it, but I do want Jay to speak also.
Well, I, I went to a homeowners association meeting this weekend, and, you know, the subject came up, and, you know, they were, didn't think it was a good idea, it's a beautiful looking building, they did a great job, and it would just.
It looks great, yeah.
I think, uh, take away the attractiveness of it with painting the side of it with a big, any bigger than we've already allowed, so, seventy something feet, square feet is, uh, pretty big anyway.
Do you need a, a motion from me on that, or just, uh, no action taken?
No action taken, we just reflect on the record that the board did not take action on the request.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so the communication, but he, he has fifty-five feet, I believe it is, or fifty-four feet, yeah, fifty-four feet, within which he can, he can comply, so.
He's still gonna be able to put something up there.
He's still gonna assign, it's not gonna be as big, but.
It, it has to be small.
I think once we open that door, we, we're opening up a lot of.
Okay.
But we, a- and we're following our.
Our rights.
It, it's.
With Holly Bush, uh.
Same thing.
Shell Station and their restaurant and stuff, we stay.
Right, so as long as he can stay within the two hundred square feet, uh, requirement, uh, he'll be eligible to place the sign, okay? So, no actions taken on item D, uh, under my section, item E is a public hearing on the Michael Myers conditional use permit at eleven sixty-five Barker Road, this is District Four property, uh, we'll open that public hearing, Mr. Myers is seeking a conditional use permit to build a custom metal home at, uh, eleven sixty-five Barker Road, contains, uh, twenty-five hundred square feet of heated and cooled space, it's a ten acre parcel zone, RE one, uh, we do not allow a metal exterior in the RE one district, and so this would be a conditional use request. Uh, so that public hearing is open, I believe the Myers are here, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the, uh, Michael Myers conditional use permit request, anyone to speak in opposition? Don't speak in opposition to it, okay, Marla's is in favor, we'll put her down as in favor of it, uh, Marla's is my friend, that's why I'm teasing her, uh, and so we'll close that public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion and we approve it.
Second.
Motion approved, conditional use by Steve, uh, second by Daniel, any discussion? All, all papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, item F is authorization of the board president, or the county administrator, or other appropriate representative youth court to execute the zero to three grant data sharing agreement, this is a separate agreement that goes with the grant that the youth court gets, they fund, uh, a part of their operation uh, through grant receipts, and so this is a data sharing arrangement that has to be executed pursuant to that grant, so all you're doing is, I've already reviewed it, and I'm fine with the grant, you're just authorizing the appropriate person to sign it and get it back to the grant provider.
But, motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Daniel, any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Item G, gentlemen, is a, a discussion, potential action on, uh, your county facilities, at the moment, because of the COVID situation, we've had, uh, a- access to the county facilities shired down for, for private groups to meet in your facilities, and so we're just simply having another discussion, if the board is of the opinion that it's time to restart that, allow, um, private organizations to meet in the county facilities using our arrangements that we have, if it's time to address that now, it's time to do it.
My, my only comment on that is, I'm good with reopening them for the same thing, but I would like some pretty strict restrictions on, uh, the cleaning and provided by Ms. Janice on the, they put it back the way they found it, have that, have that party case by case evaluated, be sure they clean it after leaving.
Yes.
Not any additional calls or, or bust to us on going back in for the sanitation side, and the only other thing I'd say, I like it spaced out, in other words, we do want, I like maybe a week or so apart, that if something wasn't cleaned, and the virus is on the surface, that we allow it seven to ten days to die where it sits before we, uh, move from there, so.
Who's gonna be in charge of inspecting after party?
My little angel right over in the corner.
Well, I had a few calls concerned on Mother Park's building, have you brought it?
So.
You're talking about using it? Yeah, for, uh, mainly, their complaint is the days and hours that it's available, uh, and I think they've got a pretty good program to where we don't have to sanitize it every day, uh, if we use it on a Monday, then it's not available, maybe till Wednesday, uh, stuff like that, but people are starting to call me more and more that they want it open all the time, and it's things like that, and, and I, I understand, I mean, I, I, I'm just saying, I've been getting some calls. I, I got a little while back, that was the thing, they wanted more, once they started using it, they just wanted it back like it was.
So, we've got some, uh, a unique situation, say, at E O C, where you've got, uh, the extension service that will oftentimes host events, uh, or it's, it's under their structure, right, it comes through the extension service, so they'll ask for permission to use uh, the county facility to host some sort of event, or allow some sort of event, uh, my thought would be that we require, if it's coming through extension, extension's gotta provide the cleaning, that would be my suggestion.
Correct.
Just tell them, if you wanna use it, you've got to provide for the distancing, provide for, uh, any, like, hand sanitizer and whatnot, and they gotta clean.
And I think we can do, like, we've done other things, we can stagger the opening coming back, I mean, it'd have to be full fledged, everything the way it is, but on a case by case basis, begin to start allowing them in, as long as they meet, maybe come up with some protocols, on how we want it cleaned afterwards.
Right.
And then just case by case, uh, allow a slow opening, gradually start adding it back, that'd be my suggestion.
Like Doug is wanting the Cattlemen's in there in November, the Cattlemen's Association, so then he would be responsible for cleaning after.
That's correct.
Yeah. And just slowly limit, start, load, slowly start it back up.
Right.
So, you, you're saying you, you think we could leave it up to the, the renter to clean it?
You put that on them, yeah.
Who's gonna go behind them, make sure it's nothing right, though? I would know if they did.
Well, I would assume, after they get through renting it, we check it, don't we? I mean, we, we got their deposit, so it's checked.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about. Trying to take, clean.
Yeah, well, yeah, so, I mean, so we ask them to do it, and then just in case, if, if it's on a su- a surface, then, like, word, what's the hour period it sits on the surface, forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours?
Depends on, uh.
Yeah?
What load of science you listen to.
Alright, so, alright, so, alright, so double down on that, let's say it's seventy-two hours, and we take it to a week, so, every other week we do it, or something like that, just the way we can ensure that it's been cleaned.
The fireman's been in the past, making sure.
At the community center, right, but maybe at the livestock areas, or the other centers there.
That's Ken.
Do we, have we, uh, have we acquired one of those little foggers yet?
Yeah.
Word's got one, but hey, i- i- if we would authorize another.
Like, so, M A S?
Look, yeah.
What, M A S?
Yeah, they got them at the E O C.
What about the number of people in there, do you need to put a limit on that?
Well, I think it's capped by the state side of that, the state.
Is it still under?
Well, no, I think they bumped that number up.
We're not gonna be there to marshal it.
Yeah, who's gonna force, nobody forcing ballgames?
Yeah.
You go to a football game.
We're doing it at Starkville, we're, uh, enforcing it.
No.
Just by, uh, product we're putting on the field, we're enforcing.
Back to regular business, and then just make sure it's, uh.
You said to stand and wake apart like.
Or, or, or three or four days.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think you could do a couple a week, Monday or Friday.
We already doing that, aren't we?
What's that?
We're already open, aren't we?
You're talking about the community centers?
Yeah.
No, we're not.
I think they're closed down altogether.
Oh, I thought we were open, uh, months ago.
Well, I think it's just kinda been.
We discussed it, didn't we?
I think we discussed it, but.
Yeah.
Did we? I don't remember discussing.
Cause we, I thought we said we gonna go in, wipe it down, it's only here twenty-four hours, and I thought it's been open. Okay, well.
That's what I'm saying, I think we should open.
That was the day you was gone.
It was the meeting I missed.
I think, I think it's. The, Slate, do you need, do you need a motion to open, or do you need, or just direction?
We just need direction, um, you guys are responsible for your facilities with the exception of, you know, what corresponds with the sheriff.
I, I would be, I would be good and bless the Janice with the ability to turn it loose.
Can we say we want three days of separation between events?
I would think so. I, give us some real better data, I mean, if, if, uh, the best, uh, signs, you can give us thirty-six hours, let's go with that, or if it's, whatever it is.
Whatever time.
Whatever the state, uh, put.
And, and the issue is of, of, of the virus sitting on a surface, whatever the timeframe on that is, that way, if they didn't clean it properly the way Janice would clean, then we come right back in.
If we were to have someone go in and use that fogger on just the tables, whatever.
But, and, and if we're gonna do that, I'd like to buy another fogger, I mean, because, I don't know what their cost, been the four to five thousand dollar range, but.
Five thousand dollars is what we got now.
But, but that thing is incredible, you don't have to have any kind of respiratory protection with it.
Right.
You can walk through, knock it out, and that deal, so, there, there really needs to be one of those foggers up in this building, to knock down through these offices when we leave every single day, those things are incredible, we, we got one at the state.
The sheriff has one too, don't you?
I was gonna say, we're using mikes now.
That's what I'm saying.
Because we've had three or four.
Laura, I'd, I'd really like to see us buy one for here, I mean, that's, that's a great thing to have.
Okay. Who's gonna, the inmate can come over here and fog if we have the equipment?
I've sprayed here, I, I think.
Are you gonna, do, I mean, can you do that every day?
No, sir, the state provided these foggers for, uh, one for every county, one for the Vanuatu, I'll tell Indians, about a hundred of them, and, uh, the other seventeen, I presume, went to state agencies scattered across the state, so, uh, we've already bought, uh, eight more gallons of, uh.
The proprietary chemical?
Yeah.
And, uh, just to give you an idea, the big room at the E O C, and our offices in conjunction with Mississippi State, so that whole building,
down there.
We sprayed that whole thing probably four or five times with a half gallon of solution, and it's, it's only about forty-seven dollars a gallon, um, so it goes a long ways, you don't have any P P to do it, very, very simple, uh, it works really well, I've been to the Brandon Library for the voting, up here at the, uh, Circuit Clerk, all these offices here, up.
You're just our resident fogger.
J C's got.
Hey, the, the only, the only, the only thing that happens on that chemical, it shrinks your shirt.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll shrink, it'll shrink the polyester side of that, but that's the only thing, sorry about that.
Alright.
It is an extra large.
That's right. Well, it was, it was an extra large, before we started spraying, and now it's back down to medium, but, uh, it's good, I would like to buy another one of those, if I can do that under additional business, so.
So, as far as opening up the facilities, how, how many days?
I think like Steve said, just get the recommendation on whatever the days is on sitting on surfaces and go.
How y'all handle that then?
Or fog.
If, if you're gonna fog it, um, I don't know that you need this separation, if you're gonna fog.
I didn't know if I had two of those, you get another fogger.
Doing day between, maybe?
If you fog it, you can go the next day.
I would say if you fogging it, you keep on rolling, if not, then whatever the hours are.
Correct, so perhaps, a, for some period of time, a small stipend that helps to pay for the cost of the funding, so the, the person that rents the facility, maybe there's an extra twenty-five dollar per event charge that helps us to, to recover a little bit of the cost of the fogging.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, so that, that would be your, uh, your cost recovery helps to, to give some sort of buy-in from the user of the facility, and you're not asking just taxpayers to pay for that cost, so, I, I would say, maybe, no separation of time, do the fogging, get some cost recovery, add it to your rental charge.
Right.
And then, the only unanswered question that I have is, who is gonna be responsible for the fogging?
Yeah, that was mine.
So, is it, is it gonna be our maintenance?
Well, here, here, either that, or I can just say, you could rotate it through employees, I mean, you're not talking about any type of danger or harm to them whatsoever.
You don't have anybody at some of these, like, the one out there.
Are you talking about the community, I was thinking about up in here.
No.
So, you're talking about the ones in community center?
Yeah, right.
Down at the livestock would be in, in the safe room, where actually using the blower, that you, we put stuff in, but the only thing about, say, coming in here, you're gonna have that gas to make up from, so.
Exhaust.
In the offices, we don't use it, but the livestock, and in the safe room, where it can sit a while, we're using the blower.
Whoever we have to go back behind after a rental, I mean, maintenance.
That's who used to do it.
Yeah, so let Tater ride back behind him and just fog it.
Yeah.
He can do it.
Blow Tater up.
I just said, wrapping my, uh, my. I just sent, wrapped my uh my text message.
When did you take her in here today?
He said, latest he's got is four hours on cop, twenty-four hours on cardboard, three days on stainless steel.
Where's he at?
Uh J L came.
Three days, man.
But if you're gonna fog, we don't have to worry about it.
That's just doing.
He wasn't here Thursday, but we need to discuss what they can do with our courtroom. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hey, uh just so I don't forget about it, can I go ahead and make a motion to put that on the agenda and get this done, the buying of the fogger? Okay, don't let me forget.
Okay.
We'll have to come back and revisit this if I can't get two more votes.
Well, no, we need to add a, while we're here, we need to, while we're voting on it, let's add a fee, how much I want to come up with.
You wanna do it now?
Well. Well, we got it right here for the facilities, just for, we gotta vote on those facilities.
Okay, we're gonna open it up, open it up, but do we have the, are we gonna do it just in timeline on open it as far as how many days? I mean, I know days and hours.
I go back to normal, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If we buy the, if, we had the votes to buy the fogger.
I'm sure we got it, that's, yeah.
Hey, never know about this lunch right here. You never know, you better figure it all out, you better figure it out.
I would say reopen as per normal.
Never know.
We got, we can save some down later.
Reo- reopen as per normal.
Extra twenty-five dollars.
Extra twenty-five dollars.
I'll put that forward on a motion to add twenty-five dollar fee for uh sterilizing.
Require the event holder to uh to acknowledge and to follow whatever the C D C regulations are, the state regulations are with respect to the number of people and the distancing and the mask wearing and all that other. Just that that's your normal part of the process. Follow, follow the normal COVID procedures. Twenty-five dollars extra to do the cleaning. We're gonna have maintenance do the cleaning, and we're gonna hold on the issue of the fogger.
That works for a facility like the community.
Yeah.
Thing. But say the multipurpose building, twenty-five dollars to clean that big dude.
Boy, all we gotta do is clean is uh.
You just find a sanitizer.
Only thing we're doing though, in my mind, Steve, is just going by where the tables are and chairs.
They're stalls, there's.
Oh, you're talking about up there?
Yeah.
I think that's all open air.
He said three days on on stainless steel.
The sheriff department, he said they got a blower there, use it.
Alright, okay, that big open room, open area, I don't know how a blower really work, like it, there's nothing to contain it.
I thought you were talking about our nine-one-one building.
Yeah, yeah.
So um.
Y'all work, y'all figure it out. Be careful.
They clean behind themselves, take the garbage out.
Yeah. We'll, we'll come in.
So what are we, what are we gonna do as a multipurpose building, is it included in here?
Um, yeah.
Huh? So we just open it up as usual?
Yeah, I think so. With, I mean, not, when I say as usual, uh try to open it back up.
Whatever the state recommendations are right now.
Keeping in line with Dr. Dobbs' requirements, either clean it after an event, if you have somebody that wants it the next day, or you gotta wait up to three days.
Hey, and and the, yeah, the the only thing I was gonna add, on that extension portion down at the E O C, they're using that as that staging area for those drop-offs for other counties. We may want to keep that closed from extension services for a little bit longer time period until we get done with that distribution point. In that room right now, there's tons of supplies that are coming in for other counties, a pickup location. Have you already moved it out?
We're gonna move everything out due to the election. Uh for election central, if you will. Uh so we've got, everything's been distributed up to this point. We were supposed to have gotten a load today due to the uh hurricane that was canceled. I've seen several emails over the last uh probably thirty days that lead me to believe that that pod operation is about to come to a halt. Every once in a while, we'll get a huge load in, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty pallets. No problem for us to move that. We can, we can move that out to a, to a small shop or, or we can move the big shop and pull up there, but uh no problem, we can, we can move it, that's just a big deal at this point. At the beginning, it was crucial to uh to utilize that building. It really made things a lot easier for all of our folks. There's, there's people across the state of Mississippi that are using uh just like the horse barn. They've, they've come in, have to hand unload.
Multipurpose building.
Multi- multipurpose building. They have to hand unload it, and it has to be shipped out that day, so it's uh it was a big deal for us, so not a problem.
Okay.
Mike, you you were.
Yes, Mud Park, Mississippi, we go up the hours, we're open from like one to eight, three days a week now. Basically, we're keeping the main arena and the bleachers done, so closed down, so we don't have to re-sanitize all that. We do that after.
What you're talking about is not really a rented event, it's just open for people from our county to be able to go up there. Especially the calls I've gotten, we've had some wet weather. And when it's wet and they have their own pastures or arena, they can't ride, so they wanna come up here. And they're, maybe it's not open that day.
Right.
Right, so we basically, we uh we're open Mondays, let's see, now we close, close Mondays, clean up everything after a show.
Over the weekend.
Over the weekend. We're open Tuesday and Thursday. We're open one more day right there. I think it's, we're open three days and then we close back down and re-sanitize.
Hey, that'd be Wednesday or Friday.
Is what we're doing. So we're open three days a week for public riding.
Coming just to exercise a horse.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got eight, I'm just picking it up, right? Would you think that would be about a average number if the ground is wet and they can't ride it home, which in the afternoon at six o'clock P M? How many horses?
That's the most we've had.
That's the most.
Most.
And they're not using anything other than just riding their horse in the arena. Why can't we just, I mean, if you're gonna be open on Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday, these people, you know, they don't, unless they've got a computer and they really know how to do it, they don't know when we're opening and when we're not.
Right, I mean, we just posted out on our website, that's what we do.
Is it to where we can't go back to where we were this time last year?
No, we can go back, I mean, I just.
Do you have to have additional employees, or, I mean, do we have to watch them?
No, we just, as long as we can keep the main, the big cost saving on us is keeping the main arenas shut down, so we just not have to sanitize that much more facility.
I understand.
We can open their own ribs. We kinda got it shut down in areas to where we can keep people, where we're just minimizing our sanitation.
I'm just thinking now, that that arena actually sits in Brad Calhoun's district, so I would defer to Brad Calhoun.
I'm, I'm, I'm good opening things up at your own risk, I mean, yeah.
Oh, for people from Rankin County?
Right, but I mean, at your own risk, that's what you're doing, going to a ballgame, your own risk.
I'm good.
I mean, if you don't have more than eight people down there, you shouldn't need both.
We not gonna be able to control eight, ten, three, I mean.
But I'm just saying, if you don't have a crowd, then you don't have to open both arenas.
Hold it in.
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, that's fine, I'll, I'll get it on.
Slade, you need a motion or what you got? You got what you want? Not, you're good.
That uh you wanna reopen uh with those restrictions and understandings, and uh let's, let's revise what we have to.
Aye.
Alright.
I did, yes ma'am.
You made the motion, Jay?
I did a while back.
Second.
Second for Steve. Any more discussion? All papers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Alright, that's Laura.
First item I have is uh acknowledgement of the receipt of Rankin County Chance Record Order requiring the Rankin County Board Supervisors to refund tax, sale, purchasers that were paid um for parcels E six dash eleven, G nine, L dash forty-seven erroneously offered for sale and authority to issue the checks.
Motion.
Second, Steve, second, but Daniel, any discussion? All papers say aye, all opposed.
The next item is the election commissioners have requested uh that you allow them an additional five days for um the work that they do, and that's pursuant to twenty-three fifteen, one fifty-three, three, and the performance of their duties. They have requested this before.
So then.
Second.
Motion, but Jay, second, but Steve, any discussion?
Yeah, what is it, twenty-three dash fifteen?
They is, they have, their code section, they have several different ones, they're paid under, they get so many days for training, so many days for conducting the elections, different things. This is, uh the board can grant them up to five days of additional pay for performing their duties, especially when they have such a.
The virus, where they got a train there.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and they've had a lot of extra work to do and all, and this, you're allowed to grant them these days.
I had a motion, second. Any more discussion? All papers aye, all opposed? Think that was a lot of ayes, I didn't hear many.
Yes.
Okay, additional business be discussed.
A is the discussion of the recyclable dumpsters.
Yeah, you want me to talk about that or?
Yeah, I say we move them all to right here.
I ain't moving none of it, and I'm gonna tell you one. I'll give you Mike, one of the things that is the most dominant phone call I get is recycling dumpster.
Yeah, we talked about this for an hour.
It may go longer than that, 'cause I wanna be sure Chuck gets this right in the paper, 'cause this is gonna be critical. I'm one hundred percent against moving that recycling dumpster from the reservoir station. I can't tell you how many calls, how many people use it, it's one of the most heavily used compactors that's in the area. That's where the residents go from the reservoir to use their recycling. They've asked for it on the curbside, we know we can't afford that ticket for the four dollars a head or whatever, or house to do it. But that recycled dumpster, that compactor, is one of the most highly used compactor in Central Pacific. And to take that from those people at the reservoir will be just an absolute disgrace.
We're not taking it from them, it's just relocating it.
I'm just telling.
Whereabouts have to go.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to do it, I don't wanna have to move it, so I'm gonna be adamant against it and.
Okay.
What David said that, we talked to David this morning, Waste Management, he said that subdivision or if Rankin County wanted to get on it, it'd be additional four dollars per house, and they would provide the bin, and they could recycle at their house.
Explain it.
That's curbside.
That's curbside pickup on recycling.
So you'd have a separate garbage can or something?
You'd have a separate, a separate bin that they could put the recycling in, but it'd be additional charge to Waste Management for another four or five dollars per house.
Madison County does that, there's some other locations that do that. The subdivisions have asked for it the whole time.
And I I think it's something we need to get David up here and let him explain that a little better.
Can you opt in or out, or does your whole subdivision have to be?
It's gotta be a lot. David's came to us before, I know we've talked about it, and you've got options on the subdivision, voting it in for the additional fee. Uh and I think they were asking maybe sixty or seventy percent of the subdivision to agree, I don't remember what the number was to agree to pay for it, but.
It it, he said it doesn't have to be a hundred percent, but it's gotta be a pretty good number.
And so Rankin County will pay the four dollars per house.
Then collect.
Recycle charge to Waste Management, and it can be added to the billing statement of the customer and collected back by the county as part of our fee.
We've got organizations, we, we've got organizations at the reservoir that sole purpose, keep reservoir beautiful, would you need me? Her sole purpose is recycling, and and they drive it, and they've done a tremendous job in educating the entire subdivisions on coming to that location to recycle.
But we're having issues with it though.
We're having issues with it just based on the mindset of people not operating it properly.
That's why we.
There's a sign on the side of it that shows how to do it.
To our county facility where it can be manned.
I think it's a terrible idea.
And the cost is astronomical.
That's no doubt about it, no question about it. And it's, it's worth every cent of it for those people at the reservoir to be able to recycle out right there.
Everybody, everybody else drives to the loc- other locations.
If you guys want to vote to remove every recycling bin, y'all can do it, but I'm adamantly against it.
When was it, when was it put there?
It's been there for a while. They started recycling, I guess, maybe back in two thousand and ten or two thousand and twelve. The compactor, they, they placed it, they placed the compactor there since I came in office, that actually allows you to, because what was happening was there was so much recycling going in, it was overfilling.
Well, I mean, why can't we replace the compactor with just a normal recycling?
Because that's what we had, and it won't hold it. It, it's just constant recycling stuff.
Three days a week now, and they can't pick the other up four days a week?
What I'm, what I'm saying is it won't hold it. You have to be picking it every single day if you're gonna do that. That compactor, if it's worked properly, they can pick it up two days a week, which is what's happening right now on that side of it.
How many times you had to go out and clean it up, Mike?
A bunch, probably. Hey, the fire, fire guys pick it up all the time, and that's just part of the deal. Is it a bad deal for the fire station guys still? Sure it is. But is it needed out there at that spot? One hundred percent it's needed out there. So um if you remove the recycling compactor from the reservoir, it's a, it's a tremendous mistake in, in my opinion, for the service that those people have, so.
Well, I'm thinking looking at the costs is unreal.
We've been paying it.
That's what brought it up, was uh the fact that we're having issues that people are not operating correctly. That's what, that's why I thought it was on the agenda, wasn't because of the fee, it was because they're not operating it correctly, like people putting regular garbage in.
When the fee came up, we didn't know what we were paying.
There's a sign out there, instruction on how to use it. At the end of the day, when it gets full, you hit a button, and it's supposed to compact it. People get tired of it, they set it on the side, whatever it is. I get it, it's a mess, and I, I, I get it. Look, I get two to three calls a week about it. I get it more than asphalt. So if you're, you're doing a tremendous disservice to these people if you take that recycling bin away from out there. So you guys wanna vote for it, you can.
Ready to just take it away right now. I'd rather have a plan or some other action.
Get David up here.
Hey, and if we wanna go curbside for neighborhoods, I'll vote for that. I'm a hundred percent with you. That's gonna cost you about seven hundred thousand dollars a year.
Let's get David.
I mean, it's gonna cost them, the ones that's in, opting to do it.
Correct, but at the end of the day, it's gonna end up falling back right here, so I mean, I get it, it's gonna, I mean, I know where it's gonna end up.
They wanna pay, and you may, you might see some of them may or may not wanna do it. It may not mean as much.
I don't think y'all understand exactly how that's gonna work.
I don't, I know, that's gonna be on, that seven hundred's gonna fall on us.
Yeah.
I don't believe there's gonna be.
We're gonna have to add a fee to everybody's bill.
Yeah.
That's right. This is what they said.
I don't think that's gonna work.
Do what now?
Yeah.
I, I don't think there's gonna be an opt-in, opt-out situation.
It'd be everybody gets it.
Waste management is going to want the system to be, when our trucks go into that subdivision, we pick up every recycling that's in there, and they will count the houses that are in there, and they will charge the county.
They can't ride around looking for them, yeah.
Whether they're participating or not.
Yeah, everybody gets it.
You won't be able to, I don't believe you'll be able to effectively have your situation to be.
See how you can.
Opt-in, opt-out, because that creates a building nightmare for us.
We've done a, a tremendous amount of work getting people to recycle at the reservoir. Janine May has spearheaded one of the best programs you've ever seen on doing.
She does an excellent job, she does, but why was this on the agenda?
Well, I think we maybe talked about having the discussion, that's why I wanted to see the fees on picking, having them check it three days a week rather than two, was the additional day per week. That's how it came up on the issue, so.
I thought it's, you know, when we discussed it, it was just all kinda issues we're having, and it really needs to be somebody manned, and so that people operated correctly.
And that was kinda the point of putting the compactor, that hopefully the signage and stuff would instruct them on that. You're always gonna have the personnel flaw, people flaw messing up. But the only thing that was, the discussion was, should we move it from a two-day-a-week pickup to a three-day-a-week pickup? That might cut down on the timeframe of it, but that, that's my only, if if we did anything, obviously Brad's idea of curbside pickup, if we can vote for that, sure, it's gonna be a good.
I don't wanna do nothing on that until we talk to David.
Correct, but we cannot take away the recycling bin at the reservoir, I can't say that and.
Well, it's not taking it away, it's relocating. You act like we're taking something away from it.
Taking it away, 'cause they, I'm telling you, they'll have to drive it.
It's a convenience, it's all it be.
Then y'all, then y'all vote for it, you're gonna hear it, but you, y'all vote for it.
I don't have the numbers, but I have a lot of folks calling and asking about that, and markets, only place I can tell them, but they driving twenty miles.
It's gonna be an easy discussion when they come in, so.
Yeah.
If y'all wanna do it, talk yourself out of it.
Word gets out, I mean, a lot of people don't even know it's up there, then how come we can't have one down in Pocket?
I, you tell me.
I'm just saying, and man, and the cost came up only when, I mean, I didn't know what the cost.
If you wanna take away the recycling on the reservoir, we didn't do it.
We didn't single out that.
Is there a method that, that you know, um you weren't here also Thursday, but it was discussed that whenever a load gets fouled, they have to take it to the lake.
That's right.
And not even use any of the recycling at all. Is there a way that we could track how often that happens?
I think they do track it though.
I'd like to know, 'cause if it's, you know, if we're not actually getting the benefit of it, then yeah, I'm absolutely removing it.
Like those garbage, those diapers in there, they said it just bust everything.
We get, we're gonna give David a call today, and we'll get to see.
Hey, and I, I, hey, I'll put it out on social media, y'all wanna take it away, and we'll pack it in here, let y'all vote to do, take it away from you.
It costs about five hundred dollars per time that they come out.
Per load.
How many times?
Twice a week.
Twice a week.
Thousand dollars a week.
Now we're going to three to fifteen.
Well, we hadn't gone to three, that was my suggestion to say we bump it up.
Yeah, when we got a place down here, probably so.
Hey, I'm with you. Y'all are doing a terrible disservice to the people at the reservoir that recycle, and all the work they've done over the years to do it, if you take away the recycling.[1793.31]
You don't think they would drive over here? If they're that passionate about it?
As long as your phone's running, they, they gonna be calling.
No, I'm saying as long as...
You boys be ready to answer the call.
No, you can ask my question. You don't think they'd drive here to dump it? If they're that passionate about recycling?
No, they're gonna stop in my district and throw it out on the side of the road.
They complain now about driving in Market.
They'd rather, they, they'd rather, they don't like probably driving in the spillway, but they do it because they believe in the passion of recycling.
Russell's saying, if that passion, they would drive to Market?
I'll, I'll let you ask them, 'cause they're gonna pack this baby up, so...
Laura, I would like to give David to give us some data on how, how many loads that we get actually get together for the purpose.
Find out what's going on.
And just tell me which meeting we're having the discussion on.
I think sixteen.
Sixteen?
Uh, let me correct you. The people that truly recycle are not the people that's gonna throw their trash out in your yard.
That's right.
I shouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
And the ones that truly recycle are not gonna be the ones that throw trash up in the recycling.
So on the sixteen, we're gonna make the decision.
Well, we're gonna see if we can get David to come and explain the curbside and the pros and cons and what.
Do you have any further more about it? Okay.
I'm all good for that. All right, what, I got something else in additional.
I think Brad has to.
All right.
All right, um, can I go first?
Yeah.
It was your pleasure, Mr. President.
Fine, fine, go ahead. Y'all flip the coin.
I got a lot of calls in the McLaurin area, uh, being there's a lot more traffic cutting through on Star Brandon, not going down forty-nine. And a lot of complaints are speeding, and I've handled that part, and, uh, but I need some jake break signs put up. 'Cause they get in that school zone and they jake breaking. And there's a lot of houses on Star Brandon Road that's close to the road.
You got any jake break signs? Yeah.
What, do you need a motion for that, or?
I don't think we got a motion, but I just, I mean, we need just two signs, put one at the...
You can have one made. You can have one made, I'm sure. Yeah, that's not a problem.
And, uh, that little handout I gave y'all, the, uh, pretty pictures of the Tent City and Robin Hood, I get complaints on that every week.
Really? Why? You get complaints on that?
Yeah, and, uh...
You know why?
Mike said we could send trustees out there to pick that up and haul it off, but it's gonna probably cost around fifteen hundred bucks to call, haul it to Mount Down.
You guys declared this a nuisance, uh, probably two or three meetings back, so it is in the justice court system. My understanding, Brad, correct if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that intermittent checks have shown that there's no one actually occupying the property now. So I think the board's actually declared...
The man that owns the property died, and I don't know if it's the son or just anybody that's walking the trail out there. Besides, they wanna sleep there, that's what they do. But now, I made, Ms. Renee made, uh, me aware of, that property has been sold.
Okay, so there's a new...
No. Went to, okay, went to tax sale. Bought in tax sale, we need to, uh, get it on the hook.
But can we clean it up and, clean it up and tack it on with them?
There's been three tax sales, so we gotta wait one more.
Yeah, so as you know, there's not been a tax deed issue until there's a maturity of the tax sale, so it's still in the current ownership. So the, really the option that the board has is simply to authorize the cleanup of the property and the impression of the cleanup cost lien against the property and collect it then either through whoever buys it at taxes or through ultimately a sale of the property.
Which will most likely not happen.
You know, we, we always try to be careful.
There are people buying property out there, and I think if it was cleaned up, it, they would pay that addition.
But we need to get ahead of the judge. I mean, we just...
It's too partial, so half acres or something.
The, the person who actually was causing the problem is now deceased, Steve. So the likelihood that we're gonna find somebody that can actually be encouraged to...
Should we tell the court that we'll handle it now, or, I mean...
Yes, sir. We should make a...
Where we don't get crossed up?
Yes, sir. We should notify the court that, it, it really depends on what the board wants to do. You'll need to add it to the agenda if you're gonna take action today. But your action would be to, to authorize the cleanup of the property. It's already been declared a nuisance. You'd just simply be, uh, in essence, changing it from let the justice court handle it to we're gonna clean it up and impress a lien.
I mean, we're not talking about moving a mobile home. We're talking about cleaning up tarts and tires and...
I just don't wanna get crossed up with justice court.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, we send something to them, and then we...
Except I don't know that, well, they won't be able to get anybody.
I mean, but we just need another...
That's a tough line to cross, man, you know, 'cause we got plenty of area around Rankin County that needs cleaning up, but we can't ever recoup our money.
Well, if you go to the tax sale, we give a tax...
I don't worry, you can't leave that, Jay.
And Robin Hood?
I don't worry, you can't leave that.
If it's two, three hours.
You just have my type of district have a mess. How do we go about even selecting somebody to, to do it?
You just, you should be glad you don't have a district with that stuff in it.
So I, Renee has contacts, uh, who have helped us with other properties that we can reach out to and ask them to give us pricing.
Well, I mean, Sheriff's Department can do it in-house.
Yes, yes, absolutely. We could, we could do this.
Then we can't charge them, though. We don't recoup.
Well, we can charge a haul and what it costs to dump it in Mount Down.
Yeah, thirty-five dollars or something like that.
Yeah, a load.
We can't, we can't charge them for our personnel or for inmates if we don't have a bill.
I think, Steve, I think we would be able to, uh, we, we would be able to produce a billing statement that this board authorizes. Uh, and even if we use in-house labor to do it, uh, we can, we can certainly come up with a billing statement that can be utilized as part of the lien process.
Yeah, I guess when there's not anybody on the other side, you can fight.
The rest of it look like this.
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole point.
Yeah, so we would, we, we would be subject to challenge on that, but, uh, I don't know that we would be challenged.
Right.
Everything I see got to be accounted for.
I'm gonna make a motion to add it.
Second.
Motion to add this to the agenda, uh, add this cleanup problem to the agenda, second by Steve.
And then I make a motion to...
Oh, wait a minute. I have a motion to add to the agenda. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now...
I don't know how we gonna clean it.
Huh?
We got, we got three bins that run around every day out in the rural part of the county.
So why do we even have to vote on that, then?
Because it's private property, Jay. Uh, it's not county property, and what Brad's referred to is, is us taking care of it right away and taking care of public property. So with it being private property, the board needs to, it simply needs to acknowledge that there's already been a finding that this is nuisance property, and then authorize through county forces the cleanup of this property pursuant to the nuisance section of the statute under Title Nineteen.
Let me just, I do have one thing to ask before we move on. Is this stuff he, they hauled in, or has other people been dumping there, you know?
No, I, I think that's one person living there or squatting there.
I just was wondering, I hope we clean it up, and then they just don't, they don't come back and start, continue dumping there. All right, we had, um, all right, now I have a motion to, to approve this cleanup.
I make a motion to approve cleanup.
All right, motion by Brad.
Second.
Same by Jay.
This guy's good, right?
That's funny.
You hear me? He's good.
Well, I guess I misunderstood. I thought y'all wanting to pay somebody to come do it, and so, all right, let's go.
All right, a motion by, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All papers aye? All opposed? All right, we're gonna clean it up.
We have, uh...
I got two things.
Appreciate that, Jay. What you want.
All right, hey, the first thing is I wanna bring up, I've got numerous emails, and I've got a, a letter from the church. But if you go up four seventy-one, you get near the Five Points area, which is where the corner of, uh, Hollybush Road and all right there at the corner. There's a really strong S curve that really turns it straight back.
We, we talked about that.
All right, so y'all talked about it the other day. What I'm needing, and this is kinda the same route Brad went down on the signage. I'm needing two signs with the flashing lights, not on the roads, but the lights on the solar, uh, signs, that has the flashing lights saying slow down as you're entering those curves. Very similar to what we've got on Star Brandon coming out, several spots. The reason I'm bringing it up to the board, when I talked to Mike about it, is the cost of these signs, and they're really expensive. So I'm taking a different approach, but I'm coming to the board for the money to buy those signs. Um, I didn't wanna just tell Mike to order them or get those things and post them out there without coming here and saying, hey, look, this is about ten thousand dollars worth of signs. Each of them is about forty-five hundred. I need two of them to put in that area. The traffic load is, is a lot. It's right there by that church. It's a very, very dangerous S curve. I've got numerous emails, and I finally got a letter from the church asking for this signage to be put in place, so, um, I'm gonna make a motion to add that to the agenda for the approval of that.
Did you say there's others in the county?
There's several of those. Star, Star, Star Brandon Road's got them.
Star Brandon Road's got them.
Right there around Drew's Church.
Why'd y'all say there wasn't any last week?
I don't know of any.
This one is a speed. It tells you how fast you're going when you meet this one.
It's still a lit sign.
I'll get this call. I'll get it passed.
One of mine's been shot with a twelve.
Well, hopefully we don't replace it.
I'll get this call all the time about them, and I mean, we got one on Hickory Ridge, got that bad curve, S curve, they run off it. We got all around, I get the same call. And we've all, I got one where they wanna flash a sign where there's an intersection. But it's always been told to me that we didn't do those, and I pass that on. One thing, it's a liability type deal. And if my thing is they see that, uh, have you put the Chevron signs up? Well, there's visible they can be at, at night. I mean, they're just stand out, so I don't, I really, if you can, you're gonna hit those. I mean, if they hit those still, I don't understand that. And I don't understand how they do them, 'cause my lord, they're sticking out as bright as a, a flashing light.
Yep, and, and we can argue about the different signage or whatever. What I, I'm gonna make a motion to add it to the agenda, to add two of those flashing speed signs to that location in that area. So it's gonna be enabled about ten thousand dollars. That's my motion to add it to the agenda.
All right, got a motion to add this to the agenda?
I'm gonna second the motion. I'd like to leave it open as to what type signs Mike feels would be, uh, adequate. I mean, that church is growing, and I understand, and a lot of the people that go to that church are my friends and neighbors, and, but even if they wasn't, uh... My, my only concern with the flashing is, and in this case, it's not as bad as whenever you have a sign that says there's a vehicle approaching the other side of this blind hill, and it flashes so you know that there's an oncoming. And then when the batteries or something happens to it, and it's not flashing, people, well, it said there wasn't anything coming, no, it didn't...
Car pulled out of it.
Right, and, and you have a wreck, and then we could be liable, and that's what Tim explained to me after our meeting last week, that if something happens, we, however, this is saying it's an S curve or dangerous. Well, you don't say dangerous curve. I understand that.
Whatever the right wording is.
Whatever, yeah. But anyhow, this is added to the agenda.
Motion to add, all right, the second from Steve. All papers aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve that signage in that area, um, using the solar signs, um, the flashing light, or, and we can get the wording right and whatever Mike thinks needs to be best, but there needs to be some kind of reduced speed indicator in that area on some signage, so that's my motion to put in place.
Motion to, motion to add and a motion to approve.
I'm, I'm gonna second it, but still, I want somebody that knows more about the legality.
I'm all for that.
Uh, and, and to keep us from being liable.
Craig, or, or possibly your possibility is us getting sued if somebody had a wreck right there and the sign's not working.
Absolutely. You can, you can be sued by anyone at any time for anything. And so the, the likelihood that a suit would, would follow a bad accident is high. You're covered under the Torque Claim Act, just like every other political subdivision, which requires specific showings and findings, and it has to be done in a timely manner, and all the defenses would be there. Uh, I'm not troubled, to be honest with you, Brad, by that thought process. Uh, obviously, we'd be troubled by a bad accident at a, at a bad intersection like that, but I'm not troubled about the signage aspect. We're doing what we can to try to protect the public, so...
Well, I will say it's gonna open up a lot of things, the signs. I can see it, I mean, I've always kept us away from that, but we get ready for some more, because it's, it's gonna open that door if you go there. Okay, all right, I have a motion and a second by Steve, I believe. That motion by Daniel, second by Steve. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
I got one more item. All right, so the last thing I wanna talk about is Larry Swales' school project. I got his attention, buddy. He's mentioned his name, rocks back in. Uh, so I wanna bring up the school money for the athletic departments, and I don't know, did y'all talk about this in much detail, third?
Wow, wow.
All right, so...
We hit on a little bit.
Just kinda hit the high a lot of areas. Here, here's, here's what I would like to say. Instead of going back and reliving all the discussion of it, and whatever y'all talked about.
Janice is saying it's supposed to come back on the sixteenth?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it right now if I could.
No, 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 absolutely, absolutely. I just, uh, wanted to make...
We'll find out a little more about it.
What the board indicated that they wanted to do was some more discussion and finding, and then bring back a final draft on the sixteenth. But we're, we're fine to move right on.
I just, I just wanna have my two cents. If we wanna talk about it and vote on the sixteenth, that's fine. I wanna get my opinion on it. 'Cause I think what Larry had also agreed with, I agree all the schools in the county should get money on the side of it. So one of the numbers that came out was Larry giving back two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the county side. So my take or my views or my perspective of it would be if we take the five bigger schools, Northwest, Brandon, Pearl, I know it's not in Rankin County School District, consider own, uh, beating body, but Pearl, Florence, and Richland, and give each of those schools twenty thousand of that number. So if we give each of those twenty thousand dollars, those five schools is a hundred thousand. Subtract the hundred thousand from the two hundred and fifty thousand, and then you take the smaller schools that aren't as beneficial in raising money or getting money from their areas, such as Pisgah, Peleahatchee, McLaurin, and Puckett, those four schools, and give them the remaining balance, which would be around thirty-seven thousand dollars apiece. That gives every public school in Rankin County a chunk of money.
Public high school.
High schools, correct. A chunk of money to spend in their athletic programs. This is Pisgah, Peleahatchee, McLaurin, and Puckett. All in, they run around thirty-seven thousand. This gives Richland, Florence, Northwest, Brandon, and Pearl twenty thousand. We can flip it around next year if Larry has the money available to do it. Uh, this is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are injected into there out of the, uh, generosity, obviously, of Larry Swales' office. Uh, that money's coming back to the county regardless. But that would be my suggestion. That spends the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that puts twenty thousand in each of the five larger ones, and a larger chunk of money in the smaller schools, so that's my spin or take on it, so...
Hey, I'm gonna make sure we're not leaving a school out.
Well, I was just gonna ask you, is this gonna open up something for the private schools in here? I say, I say open up them coming to us the same, like Hart, Hart, Hartfield?
Hartfield?
I'm just saying. I, I mean, are they gonna say, we're taxpayers too, you're, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. I just thought about that.
And they're, they're, they're in the pri, they're in the private sector side of it. If they want an extra fifty thousand dollars, then they raise fifty thousand dollars.
I'm just asking if that opens up something.
We assess all our people fifty thousand dollars. The publics feel they have that ability to, to assess.
You can expect the question to be raised, I believe, but the answer is that we are entering into, or would be entering into, two separate interlocal agreements with political subdivisions, one being the Pearl School District, the other being the Rankin County School District. By law, we can enter into an arrangement with them and have that arrangement approved at state level. That same arrangement will not and cannot work for a private school, because they're not eligible to use an interlocal agreement with a political subdivision.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. I just thought about that.
Daniel?
Not really, no. Well, I just have some questions.
Daniel, the math, and I've double-checked me on this, but I think the numbers would be this.
Tell it to me.
You've got, you've got nine total high schools that you're talking about. So you've got eight in the school district, and you've got one at Pearl.
Okay, nine total.
Uh, you've got five that are receiving, did you say twenty thousand apiece?
Twenty thousand, which turns up to what?
That's a hundred thousand.
Hundred, okay.
Yeah, so I'm trying to make sure.
So that leaves me one, leaves me one fifty left.
That's correct.
So we divide that by four, and get what?
All right. Uh, thirty-seven five.
Okay, so in the neighborhood of thirty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, for each of those other four schools. That would be my suggestion.
So the only difference between this discussion that we're having right now and what we talked about at the last meeting is that I believe Mr. Swales has indicated that he has, that he's comfortable making this first tranche, this first reimbursement amount much greater than we initially talked about. It was a hundred and fifty first.
Hundred and fifty was the initial discuss.
We were leaving out the big scoop.
No, 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 we only discussed a hundred and fifty. The two fifty hadn't been, I, I mean, is the money that you got from Litchlighter, are the fees that much increased?
I just had, uh, the interest rates made a good year. Had a good year, and I'm, I'm right, the interest rates were down two point one four percent. Pickle Vine Islands, and I, Vine D, and Reviens, and had a good year. May not have a good year next year, may not.
Well, I know you made statement last week that your intent really was to focus more on the smaller schools. And, you know, I'm willing to even go a little step beyond that, spe, in my mind, this needs to be a one-time thing, you know, but, and, and... and, and I know you wanna make a big impact. I would be willing to take much lesser money for Pearl and, and give more money to the smaller schools. You know, I appreciate it and we do a lot for Pearl and, you know, I mean, you know, but.
There is some calculations.
I wanted to talk with Larry and find out what his real goals were, what, how much money you really wanna get to him.
I've got, I've got, I've got another one for you. All right, submit those calculations at you. If we take fifteen thousand to Richland, Florence, Northwest, Brandon and Pearl, that allows us to inject forty three thousand and some change into those other four schools. So you increase their pot.
So what if we take ten thousand and then give the rest to them?
Can do that.
Yeah, you're speaking for one school, Jared down here with, he cutting Jared's legs up, buddy.
You talking about you catching it, that's, that's gonna, I'm on my way.
I, I think the twenty thousand is a good lick to every single one of them.
Well, it might be, all right, but then you start choking it down.
But, but so you get twenty and then you're at thirty seven at the other one, so.
Cause, cause really, I don't know, we don't, I'm not complaining, I'm saying we don't get the sponsorship from corporate stuff like was indicated the other day. The little schools, I say little, Florence, Richland, they don't, they don't get them.
But those are bigger schools.
No, I know, but they don't get money.
But, but they could, I guess, access, but they can't, they can't go raise money? I'm, I'm with you, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just saying this.
You gotta understand that the financial dynamics.
I, I do, I do.
The corporate places that could.
And that's why I'm saying twenty thousand dollars to Richland and twenty thousand dollars to Florence is a heck of a shot. It's a heck of a shot to anybody.
I'm just putting it on record, they don't have corporate to go to, they got.
But they ain't no corporate.
Plus the ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, little mom and pops like I am.
I'm with you.
Well, I mean, same way, it's small, ten thousand.
They don't pay taxes. Bass Pro don't pay taxes. All right, so look, hey, here's what I wanna do, I'm gonna make a motion to add this to the agenda.
Well, don't let them run that by the.
Yes. If, if y'all can indicate that you want the draft to reflect these numbers that you're talking about, then on the sixteenth, we will have a final draft that I would like for y'all to approve.
Okay.
And that would then go to the school district for them.
Do we need to make a motion to add this?
You don't, you just need to indicate to me that what y'all want to see is the use of the two fifty as the total amount of the contribution that will be made by the Chancery Clerk to the county. So the two fifty will be broken down.
By twenty thousand, least five, and thirty seven and change to the other four.
Correct. So if that's the indication the board would like to see, that in draft form that you can finally approve on the sixteenth. You've got from now until the sixteenth, a couple of weeks. If anything comes up, if anything needs to change, there's time to change it before we approve the draft on the sixteenth.
I, I'm good with drawing that up. You can get two others to say the same thing and I guess you draw it up.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with it.
Sure it's good? Brad, there's three right there.
Okay, that's how I'm gonna, uh, propose the drafts. Okay, you'll have two, one for Pearl, one for the school district.
Now, the school district then and then has to agree to the way this.
Pearl has to agree.
What are they agreeing to?
They're agreeing to receive the funds and to expend the funds in accordance with what this board has established as the method by which this contribution's gonna be handled. Which is, the schools as broken down will receive the amount of money outlined in the agreement.
Okay, who does it go to then?
Booster club or nothing?
Yeah, yeah.
Athletic, athletic clubs.
Has to be spent in accordance with the agreement language, which will say it is for athletic and it's for athletic, uh, uh, curricular activities only.
And that'd probably fall back on the athletic director.
The principal and athletic director has to kind of how to distribute it through whatever.
Yes, so here's in my head how that works is the school district is responsible to this board to come back and to explain to the board, if the board wants to know this, how that money got spent. It'll be up to the school district to come up with the logistics. Okay, so Pisgah should, in my head, Pisgah should receive a check from the school district for thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars with a, with a document that says this money can only be spent on athletic events, athletic.
And, and I would, and I, only other thing I'd like to add to that is I would like to be sure that that school, the principal or the athletic director, make that decision, not the county officer.
That's right.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what I said, that's why I said.
In the wording of it, that, that, that school, their principal and athletic director, just make that determination who goes.
Make that decision.
That's right. And you can put that in our agreements alone, so. All right, Larry, you good with that? All right, Larry's easy, Larry's easy. All right, that's all I got, I'm done, thank you.
I have two others.
Okay, your turn.
One item is, um, Daniel's request to purchase one of the sprayer slash foggers.
Yep.
Uh, I guess we'll do that out of maintenance authority to amend the budget if it's not sufficient.
Changed my mind.
Do you have another item you wanna add, or is that the only one?
Um, one that Craig's gonna add after.
The AT&T.
AT&T for the.
So I make a motion to add these two items to the agenda.
Okay, second, most members, Bishop added his item agenda, second by Brad. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, the first one is the purchase of the sprayer slash fogger.
So move.
Second by Jay. Second by, uh, Brad. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Are we ready for the AT&T?
Yeah.
Okay, this.
I've got an additional one.
We'll do it after this.
Okay, you wanna do it, all right.
We'll do it second, just don't forget.
This will be to authorize either the issuance of the permit or if it's already been issued, the removal of the stop work order for AT&T project zero four J zero zero seven one two N, which is referred to as.
Maton.
John's Maton Road one hundred pair, P A I R place. So move. That's it.
Second, motion to approve this one, Mr. Bishop. Second, Brad. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, Craig, can I ask you a question, um, in reference to right of way and all these utilities coming at us now? We're having to spend over a million dollars in acquiring right of way on each one of these projects. Is there not any way for us to share our costs with these utilities? You know, they're wanting to charge us for their actual relocation and put new equipment out there. Do we not get to pass the burden along to them too as we're taking it on?
You can, if they are.
Is there no mechanism for us to do that?
There is none. If they are in interstate commerce, they're protected by the Federal Trade Commission. Uh, and basically, they are by fiat of the federal government given access to your public right of way. The government has deemed them to be, uh, providing public services, which they charge for handsomely, but they are deemed to be public utilities in that respect and they have access to our right of way. What we can and should do, um, in my opinion, is to re- but because this particular, we'll, we'll just keep, continue to pick on AT&T. Uh, this particular corporate behemoth is, uh, is proving to be costly to Rankin County taxpayers to be here. Uh, the cost of doing business with that entity is going up because they have decided to, to start more in earnest charging us for things. And so it's time for us to consider, since the cost of doing business is going up on their side to us, it's time for us to consider what we're charging them to, to access our right of way. And I, I strongly suggest that if we end up having to pay them money, then they need to be made to repay that to us through permit fees on a going forward basis. And we need to decide how much are we gonna charge them each time they ask for access to our public right of way. And eventually, they will pay us some amount to reimburse us for reimbursing them. And the cycle will just continue and continue and continue, unnecessarily, I might add. And so it would, it seems to me that we'd all be better served if we simply acknowledge that we gotta live with each other, we gotta, we gotta deal with each other constantly, we're better served to, to just simply acknowledge that we need each other. I think they need us more than them. They're trying to get customers, right? So, uh, I, I, tha- that's the way I kinda see it and size it up. It seems like to me, if they, if they wanna exist well in Rankin County and have access to our, to our right of way, they need to be a good corporate citizen.
You answered my question, thank you.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to, to speak my piece.
Well put, well put. All right.
Steve has one item he said he wanted to add, Mr. President.
We, I, I wanna say this is almost an emergency type situation. This is a picture just outside the city limits on four seventy one, highway four seventy one, that somebody. That's a different one.
Oh, you got a different one, oh.
They hauled that to my place, didn't they?
No, it's still out here. Um, it's, uh, uh, it's right on four seventy one, it's littering, I don't know how we can. I don't wanna take the time it takes to call it a nuisance and go through justice court and all that, but it's getting strode across the highway.
Did waste made, just forget to pick up?
Nah, yeah. I think they have, I think they have.
Then picking up on so much.
A little bit.
It's on our right of way, can't we just go out there with a?
Yeah, but I wanna be able to get that money back, I want, somebody's gotta pay for it.
But it's on our right of way.
Yeah.
Who does, who, nobody, no.
We've looked up the land owner and, uh.
It won't matter, you prove he, he didn't dump it.
I have a feeling that if you went in that trailer, you could see that it'd been renovated, cleaned out.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, but if we do that, I'm afraid on a mechanism do that is go through the whole letter, two weeks.
Yeah, whatever's on our right of way, we can go tend to, absolutely. Uh, but the cost recovery is, is problematic. Uh, because the, there's just no basis for us to charge it back, Steve, unless we follow the nuisance statutes. We can be out of compliance with the nuisance laws to try to get the money back. We clean it up.
I mean, it's a tragedy.
Tell me hope's best way to handle it, and it's just gonna get strode everywhere.
Well, uh, in my opinion, this, this rises to the level of us needing to take care of our right of way from a public safety standpoint, Steve, and public health and safety, both. But, and with, and we should just simply not regard the cost recovery as a part of this determination that we're making right now.
Well, unless you wanna go through it and do it.
I mean, it'll be all, be scattered from Brandon.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, they already got like animals in it.
Digging, putting plaque.
Yeah.
Well, then I, I guess, I'd just ask Mike.
To send the grapple.
You gonna send him a bill?
We should.
Send the guy to the trailer bill?
That's what I'm saying.
Just see what happens?
The guys in the van need a trailer. The guys in the van need a trailer.
We, we should consider a potential misdemeanor criminal action, littering.
Yeah.
That would satisfy me.
Yep.
So that would just simply be you guys authorizing, i- in this case, it'd be your, either a law enforcement officer who is willing to undertake that responsibility, a prosecutor who's un- who's willing to undertake that responsibility.
Well, I think our constable would be happy to do it.
They probably don't need to be the one to do it.
We just need one of our law enforcement guys who witnessed this.
That's a good approach right there. Nothing else, you may scare them into it.
Well, no.
I've said that happened.
He can get the misdemeanor.
Yeah, so the, the cost of the county's recovery could be considered by the court as something that needs to be dealt with in the nature of restitution.
Well, can we get it?
So that, that would be the way to handle it.
Do we get something served real quick before it gets scattered any worse?
I feel sure that we could have it served by the end of today.
I mean, before it gets any worse.
What do we need to do to make that happen?
A, a communication with the constable without effect is the best way to get it going. Just keep in mind that typically, they want to see the offense.
He can go by there and locate it.
I think, give him a picture.
He can.
The, the offense and the offender, okay, so that's.
We gotta find the offender.
All right, so that's, that's what we wanna do, just shut it down with the constables.
Mr. President, I have one item for discussion.
Can I have one more item?
All right, no more items, we passed that part. All right, what's up?
Uh, a while back, we had a nuisance property in Oak Grove and actually had the man served. Well, it has escalated now, uh, you know, the constable felt like everything was cleaned up, all good to go. Well, he's back to burning on the weekends again and now has constructed a, an additional fence on top of his fence. So it goes up to about ten or twelve feet, you know, so.
That's privacy thing.
Well, our ordinance says eight foot. A- and, uh, and it's nothing, it's out of park aboard that he's doing this to, you know, so.
Yeah, but do we have any, other than that, do we really have anything really, is this one plant to garden his yard? Do we really have anything that says you can't do that?
Yeah, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
I'm just asking you, we got something says you can't have a garden in your front yard?
Well, that's taken care of at least now.
Uh huh.
That's been taken care of.
We're not gardening in the front yard now.
Well, no, now we're in the backyard, I'm just saying where.
We're burning plastic in the backyard.
The issue, it's him burning plastic.
I understand, I'm just asking a question.
You know, a complete.
Insert, fill in blank.
Yes.
Can we stop that burning or does that some DEQ?
So we, the county does not have air quality regulations, we don't enforce that. The way that state law works, Jared, it essentially, it requires DEQ to do water quality and air monitoring. The local political subdivisions can in fact enforce DEQ regs, but you have to ask for permission of DEQ to do that and you have to be willing to, to fold under their context in order to do it. Rankin County has never asked for nor been provided permission to enforce DEQ's air quality regulations. So the process looks like this, there has to be some evidence that he's doing what we say he's doing. That has to be transmitted to DEQ with a request that they investigate. There is a disconnect in there as to who's gonna be responsible for acquiring the information and transmitting to DEQ. Uh, without getting to a lot of specifics, uh, I will tell you that there have been, um, that there is a neighbor who has some, as I appreciated, some video cameras that have been installed that have possibly evidence of burning plastics, uh, things that give off noxious fumes. But that, that neighbor, upon request of the county to produce that information so that we can get it to DEQ, is refusing out of concern and fear over what this guy is capable of doing.
This one we had picked up.
Yep, and you had thought everything's good, but now he's doing this.
What, what would we pick him up on? That?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, so now you're doing it again.
Yeah.
We, we picked him up on failure to appear.
Oh, I saw.
His nuisance proceeding.
So what, what was the outcome of that?
They remanded it to the file with the understanding that he would clean up all the front yard, which he did.
Oh, but that didn't, it didn't apply to the back?
So he's continued with his past behavior by moving to the backyard and creating problems for his neighbors.
But, I mean, what, what's the solution to get him playing?
Well, whenever he was picked up, does he go to court now?
He, he's already gone.
He's already gone?
He's already gone.
Uh.
And it was dealt with, remanded to the file, again, remand means it's gonna sit over here and as long as you behave, it ain't coming back up.
Nice, park aboard.
So guys, here's the thing, we get, we get lots of commentary from neighbors about the county won't do anything. When we tell them DEQ needs to handle what you're complaining about, that the county does not have the ability, doesn't have the regulations to address the behavior that you're complaining about. In order for us to get DEQ to do anything, we have to present them with evidence. Give us your evidence, response. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get involved 'cause I'm afraid, I'm afraid of what this guy will do.
Pictures to, us? I mean, who, why do you have the pictures? He didn't want anybody to see them.
I, I honestly can't answer that question, it's the great question to ask, why did you involve yourself up to a point? But here's the thing, it's human nature that we're dealing with here, guys.
Yeah.
They want us to be the heavy.
Uh, do they want?
So they can still go to the Halloween deal in the neighborhood and not have to worry about somebody punching them, all right? So that's, that's what we're dealing with. And it's, it's maddening because tha- that's what we deal with.
We heard that during the overlay district, they said.
So rather than us going out there and telling him to take it down, cause he knows he's not supposed to out there, he's very aware where our ordinances are. I'd just sooner rather send this right back up to justice court and let the judge deal with it, rather than us going there telling him not to do it. This way, the judge can see for himself what the attitude. This way, the judge can see for himself what the attitude we're dealing with, is that possible?
This would just simply be an enforcement action of our ordinance, okay? So our ordinance says, ye shall have a fence around your property no greater than eight feet in height. So it's an, it's an ordinance violation that we can all see, I don't know why we've gotta declare that a nuisance, we just need, you just need to instruct your community development office, go start the process at justice court for this ordinance violation.
Why don't you take one of the deputies with you?
No, we don't have to go to his house, do we? Or do we?
No, okay, send him a letter.
I don't think we have to do anything.
But, we, we gotta let him know though.
He's already.
No, you, you let him know when you pass the ordinance, instead.
I know, but how, somebody gotta let him know that, how you gonna, no?
No sir, it's of record, on books.
All this originally.
I mean, to take it down, so I'm getting that.
Oh, well, I mean, you could do that if you wanted to, you could say, take it down.
Some reason, you gotta take it down.
Already gone for us, Jared, whenever we went through all this, whenever he came and, uh, wanted to do these planters, when he brought, came to our staff, thinking, oh, he just wants some planters out front, they had no idea what he was fixing to do. And that same conversation, he was asking about a fence where it could go, cause he wanted to put it on front of his property. And so, yeah, so he, he's fully aware.
Still, we gotta send him somewhere, he's gotta be notified.
Well, I, I thought since he was, uh, already remanded to the file, that it can just be reopened.
I know, we're gonna send him up, or we're gonna just?
I don't know, I was just asking.
How you gonna tell him to take him down?
I think you'd put it back to the judge, that's what I was thinking.
That's why I was asking.
I mean, I was, I'm saying, if it's remanded to the file, judge deals with it, people should send the deputy out there.
Judge, that's what I'm asking, how you gonna, somebody's gotta let him know, so the judge.
We're basically just letting the judge know that it's happened again, that's what we need to do, in my opinion.
They were burning.
Yep.
Alright. Hey, the only last thing I wanna say, you got to handle with Bishop?
I don't know if I do or not, what do y'all wanna do?
Send it to the judge.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yes. He is in violation of your ordinance.
Well, I wanna also get some pictures of the adjacent landowner where he's driven nails sticking out about that far from the fence.
Fence?
Yeah.
Back scratchers.
Yeah, this is one of his side neighbors.
Tear a dog up.
Or got a dog, a little girl, you know, so, yeah.
I mean, have you went out there and talked to him yet?
No, I've talked to him in here a couple times.
Hey, look, I just got one last question. Hempfield, Tim, has it been closed out yet? Chuck?
Running, still open.
For Christmas time. For, just for Christmas purposes, it's two years when we approved it, Hempfield's not closed. I've got numerous calls about the signage and stuff that's still out there, you know, road construction, that winds the county so long and taking up the construction site, the county isn't. Those construction signs are out there, because Hempfield's still not complete, and I'm not sure what the date of this is, but this is, I think we're in November. But we're still not complete, they still hadn't finished their punch list, they still hadn't got the project complete on a ninety day project that started in. Yeah.
Year, two, a year and a half ago.
That, it started and made, was awarded in twenty nineteen.
Yep.
So, not that it matters, but, so. Just, just food for thought, I just wanted to say it one time, Hempfield doesn't watch this anymore, they, they forgot Rankin County exists, but if they're watching, our count's still open, so.
Alright, did you have something, Laura?
Oh, we have an addition, uh, Mike Ward needs authority to travel to the coast.
We've got some, uh, pretty significant fire training coming up, that we're gonna need some training foam on, uh, checking the prices, the cheapest I've found is about four thousand dollars a tote, we're gonna need at least two totes to do this. Uh, been in contact with a super good friend of the fire service, personal friend of mine, uh, Scott Dubuson from the coast, who has, uh, put us in touch with a company, and I'd like to get with, Mr. Craig, if y'all are good with this, just to make sure that there's, everything's on the up and up, and we don't get any trouble on this. Uh, somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars worth of outdated foam that they're willing to give to Rankin County. Uh, so eight thousand dollars for two totes of training foam, this is actual real foam, it's just outdated. Uh, it's eight totes, uh, plus some fifty-five gallon drums of, uh, of foam. And if you're okay with it, I've talked to Mr. Harrison, he said he's good with, uh, letting us use the low boy to go down there and get it, cause it's about twenty-five thousand pounds worth of, uh, of weight on this, it's way too much for my goose neck. Uh, so the transportation of the foam is not an issue, uh, if y'all are good with this, and I'd like, uh, you're okay to get with, uh, Craig, just to make sure everything's on the up and up, if there's any, uh, shuffling of paperwork or whatever needs to, I, I don't, I don't know for sure yet, this just, we just got the word just a few minutes ago, uh, while we're sitting back there, that we're good to go, we can have it.
We need to add this, for you, authorized to travel?
Travel.
Alright.
And the, the use of county equipment and, and county forces, uh, to secure transport.
Alright. So I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve county travel to.
Add it, add it and approve it, yeah.
Add it and approve.
Alright, motion, motion to add this by, um, Brad, second by Steve, now, all favors a aye?
Make a motion.
Alright, motion to approve by Brad, second by Steve, all favors a aye, all vote.
Obviously, there's no, but it's just a big tree down there, so, appreciate it, thank y'all.
No gambling.
Laura, that was it, that's all you.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we ain't need a second session, can't believe it.
My man, oh wait, we do, we do, we, we need to discuss our, uh.
Boy.
Liquor. Why are we gonna just keep pushing it, I mean, we need to talk about it.
We push the consideration of that, uh, to the next planning commission, which is December the second, so we can talk about this on the sixteenth. And there would still be plenty of time for y'all to address whatever concerns.
I know Bishop and I getting a lot of calls on it, I, I've gotten a bunch, and they've got a lot.
This thing's gonna open up on other ways.
And, and the main thing, I think, uh, what I'd maybe like to hear on the sixteenth is, if, if Slate could just give us a rendition of what the law passed and what it actually says to put out there, and I know PRV's passed, you get that ordered at that, so. There's a ton of applications coming.
It's funny why they, they won't pass these things, but they don't put any guidelines, and they don't look at it, they just dump it out there for us to sort out. And all you're gonna do is open up Pandora's box. Puck, Ritz, and Flark, or whoever, Pearl. I know, but that's, I understand that, but that ain't fair to the rest of them, until they're ready to vote for it, I ain't. Jay, how much resorts we got in, resort status we got in Pearl?
Resort status?
We got any that are under resort?
I think they've, uh, I think they've now expanded it to the whole city.
So this, this same thing with Paul for the whole city of Pearl?
Yeah, Pearl, Flowood, and Brandon.
Well, then why don't they just put it on agenda, vote the county wet?
That's what Brent Powell was trying to.
That's what I'm thinking needs happening.
We can do that, there's nobody for the agenda.
The way that it's being structured, actually, I think Brent has some plan that takes it to where it doesn't have to go for a countywide vote.
But.
And they're coming back up with that in the agenda.
I don't think we have to have a countywide vote now, I think this board can vote to do it period, can't we?
My, my understanding is that.
I'm not saying I want to.
They're considering reversing the status so that instead of automatic dry unless voted wet, it's gonna be reversed at the state level, automatic wet unless voted dry. That's where I think they're headed, which means that you would be premature, in my opinion, if that's what they're talking about, to, to even discuss whether or not there should be a county.
No, no, I don't think we are, I mean, cause once we get them in Pearl, Brandon, Flowood.
You aren't gonna do this, I mean, you wanna do it under the open right here?
Well, I mean, it's all gonna be, I, I don't care, but.
My, my thought would be, let's talk about it on the sixteenth, if y'all are okay with it, we got plenty of time, you're not gonna address the, all the applications pending until December the second, and that's a planning commission.
Have we only gotten one in, I thought we've had two or three. Official.
Doesn't this take the, uh, doesn't this take this away from the? This throws alcohol by the glass out the door then.
Yeah. But you got a lot in that bowl, strip wire, that's not PRV, that's just sitting on.
Not only that, there's that other one too.
They, they have, PRV's approved too, they've already got, have you seen their ordinance?
Yeah, well, we talked about it, I hadn't read it. But I think, uh.
Yeah, I guess the problem I have with this, how they've sold, they narrowed them down to only, only three cities can even afford to do it, has options to do it. They need to take all that out, if they're gonna do it.
Right.
Well, then they just squeeze it, just go, let the whole county be what it is then, if you're gonna do it this way. Cause you got two thirds of it this now. Really?
Okay, alright, I, I guess we'll wait sixteen to go in detail about it then.
Sixteen's gonna be a long day.
Alright, uh, so we'll recess until November sixteenth, if there's nothing else.
Does that move?
Motion to recess by Jay, second by Daniel, all favors a aye, alright, all vote.